Everybody, this is the Wednesday evening, May 29th, meeting of the Portland City Council. Good afternoon. Carla, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Fish?
Here.
Hardesty?
Here.
Udaley?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. And now we'll turn this over to legal counsel for the order, for the rules of order and decorum, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings, so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. If it does not, you may be ruled out of order. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do so with a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Please remain seated in council chambers unless entering or exiting. If you are filming the proceedings, please do not use bright lights or disrupt the meeting. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Very good. Thank you. And before we jump into the order business this evening, as many of you may have heard, State Senator Jackie Winters passed away today. She lost her battle with cancer. She was an incredible, dedicated public servant who strived to work collaboratively and beyond party lines to serve all Oregonians. She was also a pioneer. She was the first African-American Republican elected to the Oregon House. She was beloved and known by many as the soul of the Oregon Legislature. She'll be greatly missed. I ask you to join me in a moment of silence to remember Jackie Winters. Thank you. I appreciate it. Carla, could you please read items 512 and 513 together?
Item 512, add evaluation of applicants for dwelling units to include renter protections in the form of screening criteria regulations. And 513, add security deposits prepaid rent to include renter protections in the form of security deposit regulations.
Commissioner Udaley.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I begin, I just want to make an announcement, which is if you're here with young children and they're getting a little restless, our office is open and in our conference room you can find refreshments and a nice chill space. And if you've signed up for testimony, we'll make sure to come get you. Welcome, everyone. I'm pleased to be returning to council with a substitute ordinance for our fair access and renting policy package. Colleagues, thank you for agreeing to convene in the evening in order to make this session more accessible to community members who work during the day. I know it's been a long day for all of us, so I'm gonna keep my remarks brief. I have three amendments to offer, and I believe the mayor and Commissioner Fish have amendments as well. It's my hope that any amendments that are going to be offered will be put on the table tonight so they can be testified on and properly vetted with our community partners. We will then hear a short presentation from my Director of Policy, Jamie Duhamel, on the substantive changes to the ordinance and the resolution, which will be immediately followed by public testimony. We won't have any invited testimony. We want to leave the bulk of this hearing available for public testimony. I'm requesting that these items be brought back for a time-certain vote on June 12th, which is two weeks from now. Now that housekeeping is out of the way, I want to offer some reflections on local and national events of the past two months that have only served to reinforce my belief in the urgent necessity of this package. First, in April, we celebrated Fair Housing Month and just learned that despite 51 years of fair housing law, housing discrimination, especially against African-Americans and other communities of color, is still routinely happening in our state. As you know, our policy has been endorsed by the Fair Housing Council of Oregon because it will reduce instances of housing discrimination. Last month was also Second Chance Month. Council heard compelling stories from formerly incarcerated individuals who, given the necessary support and opportunities, have successfully reestablished their lives in community. Someone with a previous conviction who has paid their debt to society should not be given a life sentence of diminished access to housing and employment. Screening criteria should be based on facts, not fear. Not only does that undermine the success of individuals who are denied housing, it also makes our whole community less safe. And finally, last week, we saw a disappointing congressional hearing with Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, Ben Carson, who remains uninformed and uncooperative. Not only does our federal administration want to cut billions from the HUD budget and raise rents as much as 150% on people living in subsidized housing, Secretary Carson has halted implementation of the agency's affirmatively furthering fair housing rules and reportedly proposed removing the words "free from discrimination" from HUD's mission statement. The federal government is not going to save us. The state is not going to save us. The market is not going to save us. We need to take ongoing action to assert our local power on multiple fronts to solve our housing crisis and protect all Portlanders. We've made meaningful strides since passing our relocation ordinance in 2017. Fair is one more step in that direction. Decreased barriers to housing will foster a more diverse, equitable, inclusive, safe, healthy, and resilient city where average-income renters can access average-priced rental units. While fair will not directly benefit extremely low-income households or address our pressing need for supportive housing for individuals experiencing disabilities, addiction, or mental health challenges, it will take pressure off our affordable housing providers so that they can focus more on their, more of their limited resources on those individuals who the market will never be able to serve. I cannot end without expressing my disappointment with the individuals and entities behind the robo calls that went out to untold Portlanders this week, spreading misinformation about fair and instilling fear in our community members. When you have to resort to lies, you have lost the debate. I'm respectfully requesting that we stick to the facts and debate this policy on its merits, not on misinformation and misunderstanding. Safe, stable housing is a basic need and a human right. It is a finite resource and a social determinant of health, not just for individuals and families, but for neighborhoods, communities, local economies, and our entire city. We are all paying dearly for this crisis, young or old, rich or poor, housed or unhoused, and everyone in between. I know we can do better than this. I know another Portland is possible, one in which every one of us has a safe and stable home to call their own. Colleagues and community members, I urge you to support this carefully crafted, heavily vetted, and widely endorsed policy package. It's time for us to put these best practices into place and move on to other pressing issues. With that, I will invite any amendments from my colleagues.
Commissioner Fish, did you want to go first?
Sure. I have one amendment that is very simple. It requires annual reports to council on this policy. Reads as follows. Quote, literally, "The Portland Housing Bureau shall report to City Council on the progress and implementation of this policy, including recommendations for any changes that may be needed within one year of implementation."
Second.
We have a motion for Fish Amendment 1, and we have a second from Commissioner Hardesty. So, colleagues, I have a series of amendments, and I want to be very clear what I'm doing here with these amendments. My preference would have been to hear the full presentation and hear feedback prior to offering amendments, but it was suggested to me that it would be helpful to put at least the framework for amendments on the table, then we could have dialogue, we could hear people's thoughts on it. But I want to be clear, I'm putting these amendments on the table for the purposes of discussion. At the end of the day, I may choose to withdraw these amendments. I may choose to amend these amendments, or I may choose to put completely different amendments on the table, or any combination thereof. So this is really in the spirit of provoking conversation. Some of these amendments are actually as much questions as they are amendments, but I'll go through them as quickly as I can here in the interest of time. First of all, and this is not actually stated, I would like to hear testimony on item C1A, which is tenant application process, the general portion, the notice of dwelling unit availability. I did not actually offer up a specific amendment to this, but 72 hours is prescribed in the draft, and I'm wondering what the implications of changing that to 48 hours or 24 hours would be. So I'd be curious to hear testimony. In terms of formal amendments I'd like to put on the table, item, amendment number one would be item C2A. This is under the tenant application process generally, under the section Applications Received in Response to an Advertised Notice. I would like to strike item 2, that starts with regard to any application received earlier than the open application period. And my logic there is simply that that creates, I think, a complicated process and one that would be difficult to ascertain and to enforce. The second one that I'd like to put on the table is with regard to--
Mayor, are you looking for seconds as we go--
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you. I'll move that amendment.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second for Commissioner Hardesty. The next item is Amendment 2, Tenant Application Process Generally, so the same section down, C2A, subsection 3. I would like to strike the 50 or fewer dwelling units and instead say landlord owning any dwelling units within the city of Portland. I have a second from Commissioner Fritz. Amendment number 3, this is the tenant application process generally, again, the order of processing applications, and this is section C, paragraph 2. I would strike the entire paragraph, starting with if there are multiple applicants for an accessible dwelling unit, ending with the sentence, "Without household members who self-identify as mobility-disabled," I would replace that entire paragraph with preferential access for the accessible dwelling units will be given to people with mobility disabilities.
Second.
I have a second, and I want to be very clear, that is not very precise language, and it would need better crafting. The concern I have there is with the term self-identify, and I think we should probably hear more from legal counsel in the Housing Bureau on that subject. Amendment number 4, the general screening process. I would like to, this is section D on, well, I won't get to the page numbers. It starts with landlords must apply the general screening process prescribed in this subsection D, but may screen applicants using additional screening criteria. If applying additional screening criteria, the landlord must use a screening criteria no more prohibitive to the tenant than the low-barrier, low-barrier criteria described in subsection E. I would like to strike the remainder of that, which is, or to use a screening criteria of the landlord's choosing landlord screening criteria. However, when using the landlord's screening criteria, the landlord must conduct an individual assessment, individual assessment, in accordance with the requirements of subsection F before denying an applicant.
Second.
We have a second. Amendment 5, the financial responsibility of the applicant. I would recommend that under amendment, under section 2, which is the financial responsibility of the applicant, section D, after the sentence, applicant will have no less than 48 hours to accept or decline this opportunity. I would like to strike, strike the remainder of the section, which reads, "If applicant chooses to provide additional security, it may select between obtaining a guarantor or posting an additional security deposit, and for the latter, may pay the security deposit in installments and within the timeframe established in section 30.01.087."
Second.
Amendment 6, financial responsibility of the applicant, section 2E. If a landlord chooses to require additional documented security from a guarantor, the landlord may require the guarantor to demonstrate financial capacity.
Second.
And amendment 7, that's Fritz again, exemptions. On this one, I copied, and I'm open to obviously full conversation on this. I am mirroring the exemptions that we put in our relo ordinance for a number of reasons. Landlord occupied houses with rooms that are rented are already accounted for, as far as I can tell in the substitute. But if a landlord occupies one side of a duplex, that is not an exemption. Similarly, if a landlord lives in a main residence with ADUs on the premises, that is not exempted. They are exempted from our relo. So I'm proposing, under section G, that we add a D and an E. Section D is tenancies where the applicant would occupy one dwelling unit in a duplex, where the landlord's principal residence is the second dwelling unit in the same duplex, or E, tenancies where the applicant would occupy an accessory dwelling unit that is subject to the Act in the city of Portland, so long as the owner of the accessory dwelling unit lives on the site.
Second.
Commissioner Hardesty, we have a second. Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Has the public had an opportunity to review these amendments?
No, and that's--
This is the opportunity--
Yeah, no, we have not. And so it was proposed that I put these on the table so that people can have the conversation and testify on these items. It was actually my preference to hear all the testimony today, then have a subsequent work session where we put amendments on the table. But it was suggested this would be helpful just to get this out there and have the conversation today.
It just feels like it's a lot to expect the public to absorb as they show up to testify on something that they thought they knew they were testifying on.
We just asked Eric to go get copies, so he'll be passing out copies. I had him make 20. Should I tell him to make more?
We didn't even have copies of the proposal.
So, yeah, I mean, I would have preferred to have amendments sooner. They're coming today. That often happens. Everyone in the room will have an opportunity to testify on any of the proposed amendments today. Can the record be left open for written testimony?
Sure.
So there's, still will be an opportunity over the next two weeks until it comes back on the 12th. And, and we are, we have chosen to extend that time so that we can vet any of these amendments with all of the stakeholders that we've been engaging with all along.
And another point of order question. Are we expecting to be able to take public testimony in two weeks when it comes back?
It's really my preference that we not do that, because then it puts off the vote for yet another week or more. I have three amendments to introduce.
Commissioner Udaley.
Amendment number one, for items 512 and 513, amend ordinance language to change the implementation date from October 1st, 2019, to March 1st, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That's Udaley 1, from Commissioner Udaley, and Fish, seconds.
I'm gonna share my rationale, just because I don't think that this will make sense to people without it. We really want this policy to be successful in practice and for the Housing Bureau to have adequate time to create the administrative rules and provide training to landlords and tenants. So this was never a policy meant to be implemented overnight. It is comprehensive, and there's multiple pieces, and it's going to take time to create the rules and to provide the training. Amendment number 2, for exhibit A of item 512, under subsection E2, evaluation denial, low barrier, amend to include B, before denying an applicant for criminal history, using the low-barrier criteria described in this subsection, a landlord must consider supplement evidence provided by the applicant, if provided at the time of the application's submittal.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a second on Udaley 2, from Commissioner Hardesty.
This language was actually included in the previous draft of the policy that came to council in April. We made a policy decision to remove it for a variety of reasons, including administrative burden. But since releasing the substitute draft, we've heard from our close community partners that they're very concerned we would not be supporting federal fair housing law by leaving it out, which is one of our primary goals, is to do our job of advancing, affirmatively advancing fair housing laws. So we're requesting to put it back in. And finally, amendment number 3, for exhibit A of item 513, under subsection F, amend to say, within five business days of receiving a request from a tenant, we're giving a notice of intent to terminate a tenancy. The rationale is that our intent is to change this language. It was our intent to change this language when we were working on the substitute, but it got lost in translation. So again, it is not new to the policy. It was left out of this version. The intent of the requirement is to give tenants the information they need to successfully apply to new units, and therefore would need to make, need to make available to tenants while they're filling out applications, not after they found a place and are moving out. That--
Second.
--is it for me.
Thank you. That's seconded by Commissioner Fish, and that is Udaley, number 3.
So I don't have an amendment, no?
Commissioner Fritz.
I don't have an amendment, but I would like to get some input from folks as you testify. We just got an email forwarded by the council clerk that was submitted in testimony regarding the application process. This email's from Jim Rostel of the Anchor Northwest Property Group, who says that the current software and advertising platforms do not provide for specifying an opening date and time for which applications can be accepted, nor do they allow control of when online applications can be accepted. Because nearly 100% of our applications are filled out and submitted online, we would not be able to comply with regulations that dictate when we can and cannot accept applications. So I'm just struggling with the basic premise of first come, first served, and hope that we can have some conversation prior to, prior to the vote. It once, even if you get past this challenge, if it's, if it's shared by other property managers and owners, what happens if at 8:00, when specified time opens, you get a knock on the door, you get an email, and you get a phone call at the same time? So I would just like to understand what the proposed process is for first come, first served, and then have some discussion of the equity implications of that, on account of not everybody can take time off and not everybody has high-speed internet to be able to get first.
Well, as I explained in the first hearing, that waiting period is really the one and only meaningful tool we have to create a more meaning, even playing ground, and to provide a more equitable process for people who perhaps are not native English speakers or experiencing disabilities or otherwise need assistance to fill out and submit an application. But I'm certainly open to that conversation, and I imagine that Jamie can address some of those concerns. So now I'm gonna ask my Director of Policy, Jamie Duhamel, to the table. I still don't know the official name for this table. It's very sad.
It's the table.
Just the table.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Could we call her Donna? No. Okay. Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Here we are, back again. There it is. Thank you. My name is Jamie Duhamel, and I'm the Director of Policy for Commissioner Udaley. In April, we held two hearings on the fair access and renting policy proposals that reform security-- security deposit and screening criteria regulations. Since that first hearing, we have worked diligently with our colleagues, our City Attorney's Office, and our community partners to streamline the proposals and address concerns. And we have submitted substitute proposals for you today that we feel adequately address your inputs and the inputs of others. So tonight, I'm gonna quickly walk through the policy proposals and describe the substantive changes we have made since it last came to council. As you have all hopefully noticed, the policy drafts have been reworded and reorganized to make intentions clear, as well as make it easier for people to understand. For tonight's hearing, we will be focusing on an overview of the policy and explaining the parts that shifted the regulations in any substantive way. For those in the audience who did not attend the first hearing, we strongly encourage you to watch it sometime if you have questions that aren't answered here tonight, because we won't be going into great detail. To start, as a reminder, there are, these are the five findings that we use to help determine the solutions that we used in our policies. During the first hearing, we spent considerable time on each of these findings and the research we used to determine them. We won't be doing that again tonight, but I wanted to remind everyone about why we are doing this work to begin with. There are two ordinances before you that address the findings. So these two policies seem to stand, but in fact, they work together and are fundamentally linked. We believe that one must go with the other in order to adequately address housing discrimination and not just ultimately make it worse. We will now do a brief walkthrough of those policies and talk about the changes made in the substitute draft before you today. Let's start with security deposits. We have limited the total amount that can be asked for in security deposits to between one time to two times the rent, depending on whether or not last month's rent is also required, and whether or not they meet screening conditions that allow a landlord to ask for additional security. When you include the standard first month's rent that is always asked for, total move-in costs will be limited to between two times to three times the rent total. There were no changes made to this section. We are recommending a more thorough process for tenants and landlords to agree upon what damage already exists in the unit at move-in through a condition report. This report is the baseline for any claims the landlord intends to make at the end of tenancy. In addition, a landlord must include pictures and proper evidence of labor charges when making claims for damage. There were also no changes made to this section. We are recommending a more complete definition of wear and tear that makes clear landlords cannot charge for items that weren't damaged intentionally or through misuse or neglect. We are also recommending that the amount charged must follow a reasonable depreciation schedule. In effect, landlord should only be allowed to charge for the actual value of the item, in other words, what they could have sold it for in its used condition, at the time it was broken. We have not yet identified a specific depreciation schedule, so that is an area that will be decided in administrative rules through the Housing Bureau after passage of the policy and before implementation. The substitute draft makes one change to the security deposit policy, and it is the removal of the provision that defined basic cleaning as wear and tear and did not allow a landlord to charge for it. State law gives landlords explicit right to charge for cleaning, and it doesn't provide any ability for us to nuance that right on a local level. We are recommending that landlords must put deposits in a separate account of their choice and can use the same separate account for all units. If they choose to use an interest-bearing account, that interest is due the tenant upon move-out minus an optional 5% administration fee. In addition, we are including new reporting requirements that are designed to assist tenants in providing evidence to their next landlord during the screening process. Before move-out, a landlord would need to provide a tenant with both a rental history form that follows specific conditions described in the screening criteria policy, and also a payment accounting of the last two years to enable them to demonstrate the history of payments they made to their current landlord. The amendment we submitted would apply here and give tenants the chance to request this info when they begin the housing search, so they can use it with their applications. I thought I'd gotten rid of all those weird formatting things. Sorry about that. So now on to screening criteria. We are recommending a first come, first served approach for all landlords. Now, it was always the intent of the policy that what we termed, quote-unquote, "first come, first served" was a provision that mandated a processing order, not an acceptance order. So in other words, our policy never dictated that landlords must accept the first tenant that qualifies. We simply required that they make a determination of their application in order. That intention was not very clear and has been clarified throughout the policy. In addition, we now require receipts be issued to the applicant by request, and landlords now have five days to do so. We expect this will be more helpful to smaller landlords, and landlords with more units may choose to simply issue a receipt to everyone instead of waiting for requests. That is certainly still their option. It was also always the intention to allow landlords to process multiple applications at a time, but the policy was silent on that, so we made it more explicit. Before moving to a first come, first served, because moving to a first come, first served system is inherently inequitable to some degree, we are recommending accountability mechanisms such as a 72-hour advertisement window before landlords accept applications for vacant units. This allows people who need to request time off from work, need translation assistance, have disabling conditions that require assistance, or need time to get their supplemental evidence gathered to have a shot at being front of the line. The advertisement requirements also include notification about units that are fully accessible by ADA building code standards, and the preference policy allows individuals who need those units to be considered for them first if they apply within the first eight hours of an open application period. It was always the intention to allow a landlord to keep a waitlist, but the policy was silent on this as well, so we added it in explicitly. In fact, we feel this is an avenue for larger landlords who often have multiple openings to avoid having to constantly advertise and wait the 72 hours. They can simply advertise whenever they want and hold on to the applications as long as they issue a determination in order. We have also amended several parts of the policy that refer to notice requirements and made them explicitly City of Portland-created in order to minimize burden and maximize intent. Again, we have amended the requirement that landlords provide a notice of rights to all applicants by making it easy for them to link to a City of Portland document. Finally, we have created a unique heads-of-household definition that we have redefined in the substitute draft as applicant, for the sake of clarity. The applicant is the person responsible for paying the rent and is therefore the primary leaseholder. We have created the opportunity for other adults to apply as non-applicant tenants as additional members of the applicant's household in order to make room for a variety of multigenerational households or adults with disabilities who may not be able to rent on their own. The applicant would receive the full screening, including income verification, while the non-applicant tenant would be screened for everything except income or credit. The previous version of the policy provided a much more limited scope for screening non-applicant tenants. That included look-back periods for criminal and rental histories, but ultimately, it removed too much discretion from the landlord's right to screen as allowed by state law, so that provision has been removed. We are recommending a wide variety of possible forms of identification to allow people without government-issued ID to enter into housing. We have also added a provision that landlords cannot reject an applicant due to a lack of social security number. In the previous hearing, we went into great detail about why the standard income ratio is creating economic segregation in the city. The previous version of the policy did not allow landlords to require higher-than-2.0 income ratio across the board, except if they require the tenant to pay for mandatory utilities. We still feel very strongly that we must maintain a low income ratio in order to shorten the gap between current wages and current rents to get people into housing. After much thought and a lot of math, we have amended this part of the policy to tie income ratio directly to rent amounts, specifically whether or not the rent amount falls above or below the 80% MFI maximum rent allowed as defined by HUD for affordable housing providers. I will explain in greater detail on the next slide, but let me explain the other changes first. Because we changed the income ratio, we no longer felt there was a need to offset risks by allowing a guarantor or extra security when applicants met the ratio standards. So we changed the option for the landlord to request additional security to apply only when the applicant falls below the income ratio standard. Again, it's just an additional option for a landlord to use if they wish. Also, because there was no way to regulate for verifiable friend or family assistance, we have made it an option instead of a mandate. So in a healthy rental market, most private-market housing rents fall between 80% to 120% MFI, and then there are luxury rates at the top. They naturally fill the gap for the average renter. However, as we see here, and as we have demonstrated in the first hearing, in Portland, we have a huge affordability mismatch between what is provided and what the average renter can afford. According to the Housing Bureau State of Housing Report, the average median income for Portlanders is around, I didn't get this exact number, but it's close to $80,000 a year, while the average median income for renters is actually only around $36,000 a year. At three-times income ratio, a single individual must earn $28 an hour to access a market-rate one-bedroom apartment. The median income of a single Portland renter is approximately $17.69. So we have changed the income ratio to say that if a landlord sets their rates, or set their rents, below rates pegged to 80% MFI as published by HUD and the Housing Bureau, this is a very specific policy that sets the rates for affordable housing rent amounts, then they can require a 2.5 income ratio. If they set their rents at rates pegged at 80% MFI or higher, again, according to this very specific chart, they can only require 2.0 income ratio. To some advocates, we understand this feels regressive, but we believe that the math works out to show similar access to our previous policy while also incentivizing workforce housing rent amounts. This policy would make a market-rate one-bedroom apartment accessible to those earning roughly $17 and up. If landlords chose to more closely align their rents with 80% MFI rent amounts, it would make housing accessible to people making $15 and up. It is reasonable for us to assume that the private market can and should provide housing to people who work full-time, making at or above minimum wage, or at least what we agree minimum wage should be. People in these income brackets represent many essential workers, including education, caregiving, healthcare, restaurant, retail, customer service, and manufacturing, as well as thousands of City of Portland employees. So let's talk screening for barriers. Our proposed policy does not, again, we want to emphasize this, our proposed policy does not force landlords to rent to anyone or remove a landlord's purview over who lives on their property. It is against state law to do so. Rather, this policy simply asks landlords to choose their own screening process and provides the following two options. Option one, adopt the low-barrier set of criteria or something less restrictive outlined in the code. This is a fast, simple way to screen as quickly and as easily as the current system allows. This criteria is based on data that supports a more accurate and equitable assessment of what constitutes risk in an applicant's history. In the previous version of this policy, we had created an appeals process that allowed applicants to provide additional supplemental evidence or correct mistakes. To minimize administrative burden, we have now moved that appeals process to the general screening requirements, meaning it would now apply to both of these tracks, and amended it to allow landlords to establish their own specific process, as long as it did three things. It gave 30 days for an applicant to provide additional info, gave them access to another unit if their appeal was successful, and did not require additional screening to access that new unit if it was within a three-month window. This gives landlords the direct ability to control burden and costs. Commissioner Udaley has also introduced an amendment that would reinsert language from the previous draft that requires landlords to consider any evidence specific to criminal histories if provided by an applicant. Option two is to adopt the individual assessment model. This allows landlords to choose whatever screening criteria they want that is more prohibitive or restrictive than the low-barrier standards. That is, but if they intend to deny an applicant, landlords must allow the applicant to provide evidence that they have mitigated or improved any of the housing barriers that they are being denied for. The landlord will still be empowered to make the final decision about if the applicant is right for the property. They just have to provide information to the prospective tenant about why they are being denied. This process is already outlined in HUD guidance and should be familiar to landlords. This section wasn't substantively changed, but was dramatically streamlined to be easier to read and follow. To create a mechanism that gives applicants the information they need to understand and overcome their barriers, we created the notice of denial as a requirement of the individualized assessment model only. Following HUD guidance, the previous version asked landlords to identify the, quote-unquote, "nondiscriminatory business interest reason" they concluded in denying the applicant after conducting an individual assessment. However, after more analysis, we determined that there is no legal definition of business interest reason, and leaving it in would create confusion and possible legal expense for housing providers. The notice still requires an explanation of the analysis the landlord made through the individual assessment, but they are no, they no longer have to specifically name a business interest reason. We are recommending a more nuanced approach to fees based on the feedback that the new policy may incentivize landlords to bring some of the assessment in-house. We have identified percentages that can be charged depending on the type of screening process landlord adopts. We have also made explicit when fees must be returned. No changes were made to this section. And finally, we have included a few very important exemptions. First, there are a number of ways in which resource providers and landlords have developed direct relationships and created agreements for placement preferences for vulnerable tenants. We do not want to interfere with those relationships as they serve the best interests of the tenant. We have amended this exemption to include coordinated access systems to make sure policies like the North-Northeast Right-to-Return Strategy is covered. Exemptions also include landlords or sublessers who chair the residence, units that are rented privately, and any funding or loan requirements that mandate specific screening would supersede the parts of the policy in direct conflict with those requirements. And that's it, and then we're open for questions.
I'd just like to get a little more explicit about that last item. There was a concern raised in public testimony at the first hearing that some loans require an income ratio of three times the rent, and that's, that's what we're addressing.
Correct. That exemption, which was in there at the time that testimony occurred
Yeah.
would exempt that part of the policy, correct?
Great.
Well done.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Mayor, we have a couple housekeeping items we have to take care of before we move on to public testimony.
Very good.
One is that I had made, I had moved two amendments at the original hearings that are now void, because we have, we're offering a substitute amendment, so we need to
Withdraw.
Withdraw them.
Very good. We have a withdrawal, and I don't remember who the second or is, Carla.
It was Commissioner Hirsty.
Very good. Do you have any objections?
I will.
Very good.
Thank you. So it's a Udaley Amendment 1 and Udaley Amendment 2. Do I need to read the exact language?
That's being withdrawn?
Yes.
No.
Thank you. And then the other matter of business is that we have, we need a motion and a second on the substitute before we hear the public testimony.
So we moved it on seconded. Second. I guess I moved it.
Yeah.
And third seconded.
Thank you.
And as a point of clarification, when was the substitute available to the public?
I think we posted it online last Tuesday.
It was submitted with the Friday council agenda. It's online.
Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? Call the rule.
Fish?
Aye.
Hirsty?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. So the substitute ordinance is now on the table.
And that's it? Public testimony?
Public testimony. Carla, how many people do we have signed up today?
Right now, we have, by show, 56.
Fifty-six.
Three times fifty-six.
Why don't we go with, I'm hearing little whispers up here, let's go with two-minute testimony. So try and plan your remarks within two minutes. And people with small children, anybody with a disability, anybody who's an older adult, please let Carla know, and we'll try and move you up closer to the front of the line. And when you come up, you'll see there are lights. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light goes off. When you have no time left, the red light goes on. And when you're about 10 seconds over, your chair starts to heat up. The microphones, the microphones slide around. We find that if you're about six inches away from the mics, those work best. Thank you, everyone. And again, this is a democracy. You're gonna hear testimony that you do not agree with. Please, everybody, be respectful. And again, I would just remind everybody, thumbs up if you like what you're hearing, thumbs down if you don't like what you're hearing. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Commissioner Hirsty.
Do we know if everybody now has a copy of all the amendments that have been introduced?
I do not know.
Could we ask for a show of hands? Who hasn't seen the amendments?
Who hasn't?
Who hasn't?
Who does not have a copy?
Okay.
Yes, there are.
Thank you. Thank you, we'll, we'll work on getting more copies, thank you.
Very good, Carla, next, first three, please.
Okay, the first three are Gabriel Triplet, Diane Ponte, and Ward Green, and they'll be followed by Jessica, I believe it's Greenley, Greenley, I'm not sure of his other name, Deborah Emzie, and Chris Nguyen. If I've called your name, the first three, please come up and have a seat.
Good evening.
Good evening, I want to start off by saying that after my testimony, if you'd like me to say something on the first question that you raised, I'd be willing to do that, but I'd like to read through my testimony first. Good afternoon, members of the Commission, my name is Gabriel Triplet, I'm the Pastoral Associate of St. Charles Catholic Church in northeast Portland, and the Chair of the MACG Housing Committee, currently researching housing barriers affecting people experiencing disabilities. I'm testifying today on behalf of both of these organizations. I'd like to tell you a bit about my family's personal story in order to shed some light on the necessity of the fair ordinance, and also the necessity of a city rental registry. My six-year-old son, Oscar, has cerebral palsy, along with many other diagnoses, he's considered non-verbal and non-mobile. Before my family was able to buy our Habitat for Humanity home, one of only two semi-accessible homes in the thirty home development, we lived in a small rental which had five stairs leading to the front door, and interior hallways and doorways that would not allow for a chair to pass through. After my son was born and as he grew, a house that had once been cute, cozy, and unique, transformed into limited mobility, dangerous transitions, and isolation. But where could we go? Between full-time work and everything that goes into caring for a child like Oscar, there was absolutely no way my wife and I could do the detective work necessary to find a home with accessibility features that would work for us. And inquiring about accessibility modifications always felt like a surefire way to move our application to the bottom of any application list. We, like so many families renting with a non-mobile child, felt trapped. Let me tell you a little bit about our new home. While not perfect, apologies, while not perfect, our new house with no stairs, interior double doors, and a roll-in shower means that Oscar's bedroom will not become his eventual isolation cell. He can be bathed regularly without causing injury to me or his mother, and while his sister and his friends move about playing room-to-room, outside-to-inside, Oscar can be right there with them. Like I said, we were lucky enough to be accepted into a low-income housing program. However, our situation is extremely rare. Low-income housing providers are all too often forced to be more concerned with the number of units and build efficiency than accessibility. The result is that low-income people experiencing disability are forced to the private rental market for housing. Mr. Mayor, two weeks ago, I sat through your presentation on the root causes of poverty and the housing crisis, and neither you nor any of the allowed questions directly addressed issues of disability or accessibility. It's not a judgment, it's an observation. The conversation on housing justice in this city has for too long excluded issues facing the disabled community, and this has to end. As a community organizer and pastoral care provider, I want to make this point very clear. Failure to pass the fair ordinance, and failure to fund a rental registry that includes data on accessibility features and barriers will ensure the continued isolation, or miraculously said, the continued systematic exclusion of older adults and people and families experiencing disabilities from all aspects of life, and this exclusion has an untold negative impact and cost to the entire community. So I just want to encourage you to pass this ordinance and then move forward with the rental registry. I appreciate you allowing me to go over time, God bless you, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, what is your preference? Would you like me to hold people at two minutes?
I mean, I would have requested an extension for this testimony, it's very rare that we hear from individuals with disabilities or family members. It is an issue that I can directly relate to and sympathize with. I lived in unsafe, substandard rental housing with my son, who also has cerebral palsy, and also uses a wheelchair, and really had no options to move. And so, in this case, I think it's important, I think we're going to hear a lot of the same message from other community members, but thank you for being here.
So colleagues, would you like me to extend the time?
Yes, please.
To?
Three.
To three?
The challenge then is that the people who are at the end of the list are going to be here at ten o'clock.
Well, I think as long as we're here, people who want to testify will stay.
We're going to lose Commissioner Fish at eight.
Could we compromise at two and a half?
Could you give more time for people with disabilities, since it's so hard for us to get up here?
Yeah.
And we usually do, we make accommodations.
I mean, my suggestion was to hold it two, but to give extensions for people who are representing marginalized groups that are rarely heard from.
Commissioner, can I also just make another observation?
Commissioner Fish?
We have a substitute in some amendments, so it's also, I think, very helpful if people would focus their testimony on those changes. We've heard lots of testimony on the overall approach, and people have strong views, pro and con, it's particularly helpful to me to hear what people think about the substitute and the amendments.
Okay, so let me suggest this then, this is a very complex issue, and we hate to cut off public testimony, so, and you were lucky, you got three minutes and twenty seconds. Why don't we go to three minutes and see how it is, and if you're hearing testimony that's repetitive to what you want to say or the point you want to make, when you come up, if you could do us all a favor and just say, hey, my point's been covered, A, B, C, D, I'm with them, and then people at the end of the list will get their shot at the mic, too. Does that work with everybody here? Good, let's do that, so three minutes, but the trade-off here is when three minutes is up, and you see the red light and you hear the buzzer, you are done, so plan accordingly. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Diane Ponte, and my husband and I bought our first rental house in nineteen seventy-four. We were both schoolteachers, and I think that gives you an indication of what's happened to housing prices in Portland since forty-five years ago. Over the past years, I bought more rental houses, and now own nine. The one thing I've learned in the past forty-five years is that tenants and landlords are both people, and like teaching school and grading papers, you can look at a bell curve, and at one end, just like students, you'll find thoughtful, responsible tenants, as well as landlords, who go one-hundred-and-ten percent. At the other end of the bell curve, you'll find landlords and tenants who frankly give the industry a bad name. The proposed regulations don't take into account that most tenants and landlords fall somewhere on that bell curve, as opposed to landlords at one end and tenants at another, all landlords evil, all tenants good. And I have to say to them, in the last forty-five years, I didn't know I was evil, until I started reading the newspaper about how horrible landlords were. And I came to this meeting with a lot of trepidation, because I feel like the face of evil, I'm a landlord, and it's challenging to read that about myself. I care about the tenants that I've rented to over the last forty-five years. I care about the houses that I've bought, when I chose a house to buy, it was always based on, the first question for me is, would I live here? I care about the care, that the house is in good shape, I care that the neighbors and the tenants will get along, and they'll be happy that my tenants are living next door to them. And the, I've had tenants who've stayed in my homes for decades, and I've had years where there's been no rent raises at all, and rents have stayed flat. The proposed regulations remind me of the bank loans that were made in the early two-thousands, which they relaxed standards, and people who couldn't afford to rent, or to buy, face foreclosure. And these regulations with lower requirements, I think, are going to put tenants one paycheck away from eviction when a financial crisis arises, and they can't pay their rent. The other unintended consequence is mom-and-pop landlords like me will sell. I read the regulations five or six times, and I, they are confusing, they're daunting, they're scary, and they're expensive, and I think you'll reduce affordable housing when landlords like me sell. Thank you for listening.
Appreciate your being here.
Good evening, I'm Ward Green, I'm a lawyer here in Portland, I've been here since nineteen seventy-seven, I'm proud of the city, I admire and respect what you folks are doing, this is the first time I've ever come forward to testify, and I'm pleased to be here. I agree that we share a moral obligation to provide affordable housing. I'm concerned about this package of ordinances not achieving that goal. I think I won't be popular when I say I would like to see the political will to raise taxes, especially on wealthy Portlanders and businesses. The fact is, the city is doing well, many of us are doing well. We complain about this problem, and yet, we don't seem willing to shoulder the burden to address the problem, so I think we need some political will and courage. I think we need to allow more density, I think we need to allow more ADUs, I think we need to allow faster, cheaper building permits for people who want to construct rental properties, to create a fast track. We need to create more housing, not the expression of rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic, forcing somebody out and letting someone else come ahead of them because they applied first, isn't going to create more housing. I would also say, the very idea of doing something, I know it's attractive, I had a friend, a lawyer, who said laughingly, "Don't just do something, stand there." Of course, we don't like to do that, we want to do something to show that we care. I think this ordinance is wrong, I think it's demonizing landlords, and I think it's not going to increase the number of available rentals, I think it's going to encourage some private landlords to get out of the business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, all three. Next three, please, Carla.
Are Jessica Greenley, Deborah, and Chris Nguyen, and they'll be followed by Jennifer Hughes, Nicholas Cook, and Tony Jordan.
Good evening, welcome.
Go ahead and start.
Hello, my name is Jessica Greenley, I work for Affinity Property Management, I'm also a renter in Portland and have had a lot of exposure to this policy. I'll try to, I'm totally changed for my testimony based on some of the amendments, because I'd like to weigh in on that portion of the conversation. I just would like to explain how advertising typically works now for market-rate housing, and a lot of affordable buildings as well. Essentially, it's a very automated process. Housing, as soon as we receive a notice from a tenant, or as soon as we send a notice to a tenant that they will be leaving, it goes into the system, and it automatically pushes out through ILS feeds, which are just like automatic streams that goes to all of the different advertising platforms, including Craigslist. There's not a human interaction with that process. And so, this ordinance dramatically increases the expense of the administrative labor associated with it, because we have to move everything to a very manual process. So I think that is a fundamental prop, challenge with this ordinance, I applaud the intent to increase access to housing, but what this doesn't account for is the added expenses associated with that, that ultimately end up increasing housing costs, and that translates into rent over the long time term. It weighs into the performance of developers and their decision-making process as to whether or not they're going to continue to build. Portland especially needs a lot of infill housing, which means that's your smaller developer, the under-fifty-unit building. This definitely dissuades investors from investing in that type of product, because it adds to the costs associated with building. And so, I just, I wanted to touch on that component of it, regarding the amendment of the eight-hour time period, again, that's also a very manual process, right now, most landlords use an automatic tracking system, automated tracking system, to record a date and time when applications are received. However, to do this eight-hour delay is, takes it out of that automated process and makes it very manual, which makes it more labor-intensive, it means you need more staffing, you can't use the technology to handle those things for you. It either puts you in a situation where you allow that to be an editable field, which compromises the integrity of the information in the system, or it becomes, and I'm sorry, I'm probably talking a little bit too far on this, but ultimately, the policy is short-sighted. It detracts from the long-term housing strategy for the city. It makes it more challenging to build and invest in Portland, which is ultimately what we need. Portland has a housing bond out there right now that is just starting to find its feet, the RFP is due June twenty-eighth. All of this type of stuff gets factored into every budget regardless of the need, and it compresses the ability to provide services on the affordable side, and makes it more challenging to build on the market rate. So, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and by the way, people don't get the chance to finish their testimony, we will accept written testimony as well.
Can I ask a quick question, Jessica? I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying about the advertising, because as you know, we've engaged with landlords a lot, and I don't know that we've heard from landlords that it would be impossible, or extremely onerous, so is it the eight-hour waiting period, or is it that twenty-four, forty-eight, or seventy-two?
It's both, as far as the processing time, because it's built into the software, and you should be receiving a letter from CoStar this week as well, who's one of the largest advertising platforms, about the challenges of reconfiguring their software and their inability to meet the needs for the city of Portland.
And so, help me understand why you can't accumulate applications for that, you know, the mayor's proposed twenty-four, forty-eight, our policy currently says seventy-two, how is that creating what cost?
The reduction of time, the reduction of time reduces the vacancy loss potential, it doesn't change the labor involved in implementing this, because it takes it out of the software's hands, and making it a very automatic process, where the only physical interaction is that employee entering the notice information in the system and showing the available date of what that unit is going to be, and makes it where we have to individually post to all of those thirty advertising platforms that we currently post on there. So it takes it from like a one, two-minute task, to something that somebody could spend three or four hours a day on, just posting for that one unit.
Okay, I might have Jamie follow up with.
Yeah, and I've shared this with her in the past, and I'm happy to provide further information, or even do a demonstration of how the software works.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Deborah Emzie, Executive Director for Multifamily Northwest. While we share the city's council's goal of improving access to housing for vulnerable populations, we do not believe that eliminating or watering down basic consumer financial protections is the way to accomplish that objective. What this proposal is doing is watering down industry safeguards that protect consumers from entering into housing contracts that they cannot afford. Contrary to the political messaging around this bill, a requirement that tenants earn three times monthly rent is not designed to protect landlords, it is to prevent consumers from entering into housing contracts they cannot afford. When someone moves into housing that they do not have the income to support, they are far, far more likely to fall, to fail to make rent payments, and ultimately to be evicted. We see this frequently, even for tenants who earn more than three times the monthly rent. By eliminating that protection, you are ensuring that the more vulnerable Portlanders will enter into housing contracts they cannot afford, that more Portlanders will be evicted, and that those same exact Portlanders will then have a much harder time securing housing as a result of a forecause eviction. The chain of events will logically lead to more housing instability, and ultimately homelessness. Please do not go down this path. Similarly, discretion in renting to individuals with egregious criminal backgrounds, in particular, violent sexual and domestic abuse crimes, is not to protect landlords. Most of our members do not reside in the housing communities that they operate. The discretion is to protect other tenants, including young families, seniors, and survivors of domestic abuse, whose safety we also believe is incredibly important. I do believe it is important to acknowledge the deep racial disparities that exist in our criminal justice system, and to also affirm that all criminal backgrounds are not equal. This is a very sensitive, difficult question that we all must work together to resolve, but this proposal addresses it in a way that is extremely unclear, and essentially forces a housing provider to act as judge and jury on each individual. a housing provider to act as judge and jury on each individual case. It will result in improper screenings in and out, and ironically, it may ultimately lead to more discrimination. I have submitted a longer list of concerns, but I would urge Commissioner Udaley to slow this process down and take a more measured approach in our support for the goal of housing access. And despite the political rhetoric over the past several years, we remain deeply open to partnering with the city, stakeholders on policies that will expand housing access while protecting the right and safety of Portlanders. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, and perfectly timed. Commissioner Hardison.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I have to ask, do you have any data that shows that people who are paying today more than two times their rent are more likely to be evicted than people who have three times their rent and salary? Do you have any empirical data that proves that?
Commissioner Hardison, at this time, no, I don't have any empirical data. I do have some ways of getting at it.
So I just want to say that I know my office reached out and said we would talk with anybody that wanted to provide solutions. I didn't hear from your organization until a week ago Tuesday. And so to imply somehow that we haven't been open, willing to negotiate, I find very disingenuous. And so I just have to put that out there publicly. I would love if you have some independent data that shows that you are more likely to be harmed by people that just have two times the rent rather than three, that you provide that to me and my colleagues. Otherwise, I would not state that as a fact. Thank you.
I'd be happy to follow up with you.
And I just want to clarify for everyone in the room and listening, our low barrier screening policy is completely optional. Landlords still have the choice of using their own criteria. They're not being forced to rent to anyone they don't want to rent to. They simply have to demonstrate that they are denying based on a non, for a non-discriminating reason.
Well, you can testify to that when it's your turn. Very good. Thank you. Good evening. Did you want to go next?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Yeah, you got it.
My name is Chris Nguyen. The last time I was here, I shared two personal stories. The first, about my father, who's a Vietnam immigrant, being attacked by a white supremacist that was recently released from prison when we lived in Louisiana, and how my feelings that if that community had properly screened, he might not have been placed in that position. And secondly, about my stepfather, who recently moved to Portland, well, two years ago moved to Portland and was able to find housing even with a felony record for possession with intent to distribute within 45 days. While I appreciate the work that the council is doing to hear all testimony and modify this policy, I do want to also state that the proposed screening criteria and security deposit changes still pose a serious threat to renters within the city of Portland for many reasons. Some of these reasons include the new regulations discourage property owners from adhering to existing policies that permit them to avoid renting to persons convicted of property crimes, sex offenses, and aggravated murder. You do state that there is an individual assessment option. However, this option, while it does allow property owners to exclude persons with these types of histories, it is so vague and cumbersome that it will be impossible to effectively implement without the direction of an attorney. Property owners are also unlikely to choose this individual assessment option because its subjective review criteria are contrary to effective fair housing policy, which requires you to make objective decisions based on pre-described criteria. Secondly, the required acceptance of non-governmental ID increases the risk of identity theft or false screening results. This also creates the risk that a person may be approved under a false identity, a particularly scary prospect for someone or anyone living next to that person. And finally, reducing the rent-to-income ratio threshold to two times the rent allows individuals to enter into risky financial situations, potentially impacting their ability to pay their bills and afford essential items like food and medicine. The existing standard that requires a person to earn three times their rent ensures that they select financially viable housing options and reduces their risk of experiencing forecause eviction. It's because of these concerns that I respectfully request that the city council vote no on these proposals and explore sustainable options that provide housing to the city's most vulnerable populations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, all three of you. Next three, please, Carla.
Are Jennifer Hughes, Nicholas Cook, and Tony Jordan. And they'll be followed by Corina Diannabelle, Tim Pitts, and Jim Rustel.
Good evening. You want to go ahead and start?
I certainly, sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Jennifer Hughes. I am a Portland native, born and raised in southeast Portland, rode my bike up and down the street, went to Dairy Queen, worked at Taco Time, was my first job. I love Portland. I also love the property management industry. It gave me an opportunity to not have a college degree, but I could learn a career. And I have. And I've spent, since 1994, I started out as a leasing agent. And what a great honor to be able to provide someone with housing and build relationships. That's really, I'm a relationship builder. My concerns with the new policies, I want to second what Jessica was saying. I do think it's going to create a heavy burden for landlords, especially those in affordable. I was happy to hear that there would be training for landlords and their staff on this confusing process. I guess my concern would be who is going to help our vulnerable residents understand this confusing process? Additionally, I'm a single mom with a daughter who has mental health issues, and we are going back into apartment living and removing safety provisions like screening for serious criminal backgrounds. My concerns, obviously, about having someone who lives next door that has a sexual crime, a sexual offense, or potentially aggravated murder, obviously concerns as a single mom. I feel in this time, a very divisive culture. I would hope that Portland could come together to find a viable solution that works for everybody, and I just don't think this is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carla, before we hear the next speaker, did you call Tony Jordan up?
I did.
I got switched out for Tony Jordan.
Oh, wait a second. Wait a second. We have people who've signed up in sequence.
I was, I was, I was gonna, I'm Tony Jordan. She has to leave, so I was telling her to take her seat. Yeah, sorry. And I just found that out. So, I mean, it's fine, whatever. I don't want to interrupt her.
It's okay with me.
We're spending more time worrying about it. Sit down. In the future, please just sign yourself up and we'll call on you. Very good.
Yeah, people are having to leave, I guess.
Understood. Good evening.
Good evening. So my name is Nicholas Cook, and I'm a native Portlander, and I own Sleep Sound Property Management. We've been in business for over a decade. We're a small business here. We have 11 employees. I can tell you that just as an operator, you know, we are having trouble navigating the criteria that's been set forth. I have a lot of concern that our team won't be able to do that very well without exposing us to a lot of legal liability. And if we, as professionals, have been doing this for over a decade, are going to have challenges with this, I very much believe that the resident base that's going to be sifting through this, especially those that are more vulnerable and landlords who maybe don't do this on a regular day-in, day-out basis, are going to struggle. And it's going to create a more contentious relationship. It's going to add legal liability and cost, which is going to drive probably a lot of smaller landlords out of the area. It may even cause us to look at operating in areas outside of Portland, which we currently do, but then just redirecting our efforts, which is unfortunate. You know, we've been on the fastest-growing businesses in Portland in the last two years, Portland Business Journal, and for us to leave Portland is not something I hope to do. I think that the spirit of the rules are in the right place. I think there's a lot of workable things in the list so far, but there are some things that just are very problematic. So I don't think the entire, you know, effort is bad, but there's got to be more solutions than what has been put forth. And we really need to take into account how this plays out in real life and the operational side of things. Because, you know, as the operators, we want people to get into housing. It makes our life easier if they get approved. It's when somebody who gets denied that we have to go through this whole extra process. And, you know, for the most part, people don't like delivering bad news. So we're not advocating to keep people away. I mean, like, I echo a lot of what people have said. The criteria is there to prevent people from entering into agreements that they just cannot financially handle. So, I mean, there's a lot of other ways to look at this, but I'm going to just say currently that I would encourage you to vote no as it stands and go back to the drawing board.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Sarah Brassfield. Sorry for the confusion. I was kind of notified last minute somebody was going to switch with me.
No worries.
So thank you, council, for your time and hearing me. So I moved to Portland in January of 2003, and my woes started in 2006 in regard to renting when I went to college, you know? And instead of ending up with a good education, I ended up with a mortgage worth of debt. And so basically, based on the volume of debt I had amassed from the school, it subsequently affected my credit. And despite all my payments being posted as on time, I just, you know, wasn't credit-worthy anymore. And so basically, I've struggled to sustain secure housing because of my credit. And I know I'm not alone in this experience, and I know it's exponentially harder for the 40% of borrowers with loans in default. And so as of today, you know, we know there's about $1 trillion worth of that debt. There's a lot of people, because of student loans, who are barred from access simply because of their credit. So as it stands, I have no hope of ever owning a home, and because of poor credit, I don't meet posted criteria for a lot of places when they require high credit scores, even though I can usually meet the ridiculously high income requirements. So I now must secure housing by relying on housemates and cosigners or by finding landlords who will look the other way. Those aren't options for everybody, since not everybody has a community who can step in to lending a helping hand. In Portland's trendy housing market, it's getting less likely that a tenant could even find a sympathetic landlord if we tried. I know that even with my credit blemishes, the barriers I face are far less than some of those in our community. I've witnessed countless instances where my neighbors and friends, especially those tenants who are elderly, people of color, or immigrants, have been utterly devastated when our buildings are sold to the highest bidder, and suddenly, we are forced with little to no option but to move, which now makes these already highly discriminated against groups all the more vulnerable, as it is further likely they will encounter countless barriers that will prevent them from re-establishing stable housing. Inequitable screening criteria kicks out and keeps out hard-working, underpaid people, disabled people, LGBTQIA folks, single mothers, houseless individuals, and every other marginalized community, in favor of those with only the highest-paying jobs and the biggest bank balances. Once people get pushed out of their homes, it is extremely difficult to find another because, under the current screening criteria, few places will take us. Thank you for listening to my testimony. If you believe that all tenants deserve equitable screening criteria, please vote yes on the fair ordinance without delays and with full funding for a rental regulation system to enforce it. Because let's get honest, we're saying, setting people up with, you know, two times the rent or two and a half times the rent or even three times the rent is setting them up to fail. Not passing this is setting up more Portlanders to live in tents. Thank you.
Thanks, all three again. Next three, please, Carla.
Are Corina Diannabelle, Tim Pitts, and Jim Rustel. And they'll be followed by Hannah Holloway, Soren Impe, and Dan Villari.
Good evening. Would you like to start, please?
Yes, thank you. My name is Corina Donnibale, and I am an office manager for Round Hill Pacific Residential Property Management in northwest Portland. I know that proposed changes to city ordinances regarding security deposits and applicant screening are being considered because we want to help renters, but I believe that they would be detrimental to landlords, their employees, and their residents. These amendments aren't pro-tenant, they're just unreasonably anti-property owner. If these changes are approved, property owners' budgets and staff will be strained, which will also impact renters. In section C3 of 300186, the proposal to inquire about general disabilities would force property owners to break federal fair housing law every time they give or receive an application to a prospective resident. D2, the proposal to allow residents to choose who will be financially responsible does not take into account who will be responsible for monetary or physical damages should the responsible resident leave and another remain. D1B, if a property owner cannot decline applicants who have not repaid for any amount of property damage, it puts them at unfair financial risk. Public record of unpaid damage to property is an accurate indicator of future property damage in my experience. Regarding amendments to code section 300187, C1, implementation of exact itemized list of appliances, fixtures, and equipment and their exact cost will be extremely time-consuming and expensive for property owners and may be impossible when it comes to historic fixtures that are not replaceable. D1, requiring property owners to hire a third party to assess the unit is expensive and onerous. It would be a waste of staff time to create a written report for every single unit and update it every single time there is a work order or any repair in the apartment, instead of allowing photographs as a baseline. D3, for property owners with many units, it may not be feasible to know exactly how many apartments one can walk in a single day, and therefore, scheduling the exact date and time of a walk-through and giving 24 hours' notice is not always possible. This would be extremely difficult for a manager or property owner with disabilities, of which I am one. In conclusion, the additional financial, material, and labor strains of the responsibilities laid out in these proposals will cause a shortage of skilled managers and admins who wish to go into property management industry. More mom-and-pop owners are going to have big corporations manage their rentals for them, and they will provide fewer upgrades to apartments and amenities, as well as raising rents upfront. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. I'm Tim Pitts. I'm the owner and principal broker of Think Real Estate, which is a residential brokerage in the city of Portland. And my husband and I are fortunate to own multiple rentals in the city. So to borrow a heteronormative phrase, pop-and-pop landlords, as many of us are here. I have sat in many meetings with Commissioner Udaley's office to explore and craft this proposal, and I've spoken to countless colleagues in the industry, people that own rentals, people that sell real estate, people that buy real estate. And from the beginning, I was skeptical because it made me nervous to hear the ideas that were out on the table. And so we spent months working through these ideas and trying to understand what are we addressing here. And I was shocked at every turn of what I learned. I was shocked about the discrimination I learned about. I was shocked about the simple fact that credit scores are such a poor indicator of somebody's future performance as a tenant, and that people of color historically have lower credit scores than white people. Time after time in these meetings, we understood people are getting taken advantage of, people are being used and abused, for lack of a better word. And no, it's not all landlords, but a lot of them are. And I feel like this policy, when you look at all of the pieces of it, yes, it can be overwhelming, and I can understand why people feel threatened, or they feel scared, or they feel like they're going to lose their livelihood. But when you actually take the time to look through, and it's pages and pages because it's doing a lot, everything makes sense. It makes sense that you get a written condition report on your property. If you're going to take money from someone because they broke something of yours, you should have to prove in some fashion that they broke it. And as far, I mean, it's the screening, the security deposit, really, the whole piece, I feel like, is all about education and clear guidelines. And I know, it's a lot of rules and regulations, it seems like a lot, but the world of rental housing needs more regulation. We wouldn't be here if it weren't for the fact that people are being taken advantage of and that we have a housing crisis. And for somebody to sit up here and say that we're going to have more homeless people if we pass this, you get homeless people when they can't afford to move. They can't get their security deposit back, and they literally cannot afford to move. So that's what we're trying to do here, is put some base level of protection in place. So I would just beg you to please look at the pieces individually, understand that this all makes sense as a total package, and please move forward on it as soon as we can so that we can help people. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jim Rustel. I am with Anchor Northwest Property Group. We have about 23 multifamily properties, all in Portland. We are a family-run business. We're all here from Portland. We are opening four new buildings this year. We have plans to open 10 more buildings in the next two years and have over 2,200 units in Portland. Kind of want to jump to, you know, I had this written out, I just want to talk off the cuff, because at the end of the day, we all want a healthy housing market, and I think we can work together to achieve that goal. The first thing, and Commissioner French mentioned my email, the 72-hour waiting notice is going to be problematic for any company of any size. We are turning over around 700 units a year currently. So in order to manage those, and a majority of them, we try and schedule to come in the better months, the summer months where we have a lot of traffic, that type of thing. So it would not be uncommon to have 100 units turn over in a month for us. In order to manage 100 units in a single month and know when they go on the market to make sure we wait three days, build in that vacancy, then start accepting applications, becomes onerous for us. It also, it would take an entire full-time employee just for that piece alone. There's no software currently available that would manage this for us. If there was, it would be not nearly as big of a deal. In addition, the other problem we have with that is that billing in 72 hours' worth of vacancy is very, it's going to cost us a lot of money in the long run. The reality is, if my average rent is $1,300 and we're turning over 700 units, those three days of vacancy built in at $40 a day is close to $80,000 a year. In addition to managing that, and that puts another $150,000 a year of cost, where does that cost go from an owner? You know, we don't have the margins that I think a lot of people want us to think we have. So I think that's going to put pressure on rents in general. So I'd like to see that reexamined to where So, I'd like to see that re-examined, to where, we're on a first-come, first-served basis. I can tell you, of 700 applications last year, I can't remember maybe three or four where we had multiple units, where we had multiple applications, and every time, we were able to find another unit for that person. So, I don't know that this is as big a problem as, at least in our world, where we're at, as maybe it seems to be on paper. The second piece that really concerns us is the rent income regulations, the two times. I understand what you're trying to do. The reality is, the more burden we have, and that's the definition, 50% of your rent, of your income, or of your rent, taken up by, or your income taken up by rent, is definitionally severely rent-burdened. If you're telling us, we have to take people that are severely rent-burdened, we're going to have a bigger failure rate. Bigger failure rate's going to mean more costs, it's going to mean more evictions at some point. At the end of the day, we had discussions this morning, do we move to another market? Do we move to Boise and build in Boise? Do we build something else, like retail? Less risky.
Thank you. Thanks, all three of you, appreciate it. Next three, please, Carla.
Our Hannah Holloway, Soren Impe, and Dan Valeri, and they'll be followed by Tyrone Poole, Sam Noble, and Chris Lowe.
Good evening. Would you like to start, please?
Sure. I'm Hannah Holloway, I'm here on behalf of the Urban League of Portland. I was here last month on behalf of the organization, in support of this policy as well. As I testified, then, the Urban League believes that updating how landlords assess housing applicants is one of the more effective ways to direct our private rental market to thoroughly comply with fair housing. We don't just want fair housing to be a reality in discreet pockets of our city, or dependent upon a person's landlord, but full across the entire market. I'd like to thank Commissioner Udaley and your team for championing this policy and getting it this far. The Urban League has worked on this policy for the better part of two years with your office, because we have seen, time and time again, from reports from the Fair Housing Council and from the Housing Bureau, that black renters are more likely to receive differential adverse treatment during the application process, and to be screened out of the city entirely by common landlord screening practices. The Urban League works with about 450 of these households annually, and we can say that this is still a problem, right? And it's a little bit frustrating, from our perspective, that we still have to help people navigate a system that is fundamentally discriminatory, when we have the legal recourses and the legal imperative to fix it. We have the Supreme Court's ruling from 2015, and the relevant HUD guidance that directs landlords to apply a more subjective assessment when people have criminal histories. We believe in the goals of this policy ardently, and feel that inaction would only allow the miscarriage of fair housing to continue in our market. I'm here today to address some of the amendments that have been brought up, and in particular, our concern that some of them will perpetuate harm for renters in the market. In particular, we're troubled by the new income requirements that would apply a 2.5 monthly rent income for rents below 80% MFI, but 2% above. To apply those to more affordable units, likely those with, who have people who are applying with lower incomes, holding them to a higher income standard is patently regressive. And if adopted, this amendment would codify a higher barrier to housing for low and average income folks than for people with more means. The Urban League believes that a two-times income requirement is reasonable, but cannot support this differentiated standard. We were also disappointed to see the removal of supplemental evidence and the individualized assessment, and thank you, Commissioner Udaley, for reintroducing that. Mayor Wheeler, if I'm understanding your proposed amendment correctly, it would remove it again, but again, we think that that would not fulfill our requirement to comply with the HUD disparate impact guidance, and it's actually required to have landlords at least have this option of applying the individualized assessment.
And that's amendment number four, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Lastly, I'll also say that we're troubled by the amendment to expand the ability to ban tenants to all landlords. We know that evictions are not given equally, and single-parent households led by black females are the most likely to get an eviction. This amendment would use that previous discrimination and disparities that people experience to further deny housing. And I'll just say, we really support the goals of this policy and the previous versions of this policy. We're worried about codifying further harm to folks, but it's a critical piece of policy, and it critically applies the requirements of HUD and that Supreme Court ruling, and we ask that you pass it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I've rented a small apartment in southeast Portland for 20 years. Soren Impe, sorry.
Thank you.
And I first want to say, I don't want healthy housing market profits, I just want affordable, habitable, and stable housing. When I applied for this apartment, I was one of many applicants, and despite earning about two times income, I was told that the landlord, I was told by the landlord, that they decided to rent to me, because I was a new OHSU employee, and had good credit. So, clearly, some tenants are a good bet when they earn two times income. In essence, I won this landlord's racist and classist socioeconomic beauty contest. And this is a completely dehumanizing way to allocate housing in our city. And the city's own audits agree with this, as I mentioned the last time I gave testimony. The 2015 audit found that 48% of the time landlords discriminate against black and Latino and people of color, and 64% of the time in 2011. This is, this is just, needs to be addressed. It should have been addressed after those two audits. It must be addressed. I beg you to address this legacy of classist and racist housing discrimination by voting for the fair ordinance. And I just want to end with another personal story. So, I've lived in this apartment for 20 years. It's in a cul-de-sac, a large, grassy area. It's a perfect place to have a family. Some of the units are larger one-bedroom apartments, and still relatively affordable. I've seen families apply for housing in this cluster of small apartment buildings many, many times. Not once in my 20 years of living there has a family ever been rented to. So, that's another level of injustice, and I would really urge you to address this terrible legacy in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Dan Valier, Reach Community Development. We, I come here tonight, first of all, to speak in general support for the concept of what we're trying to do. Reach has been investing a lot of time, and me personally, in this process, because we do believe it's important. And there have been a lot of changes to this policy over time. I mean, it looks very different today than it did even six months ago. So, a ton of work has gone, a lot of effort. So, we don't come here tonight in any way to oppose this, so when I do say, we continue to advise certain modifications to fair, that is not saying we're in opposition, but it is saying we still have some concerns about elements. I mean, I think you are hearing that from a lot of people. I've submitted some testimony, and I've sent things to your offices, so I won't go through all that. But I'm happy to, whenever you want to, but, you know, I won't do that here tonight. I will say, I think, for us to succeed, and this is a very ambitious thing that we are trying to do, and that's a good thing, we're trying to do something that really has not happened in any other city that I'm aware of. To do that, we're going to have to continue to iterate, that's what's going on tonight. I mean, even the fact that we had literal changes tonight just shows we're trying to iterate as we go. And I want to point out, I think one thing that could help us do that, is the rental registry system that the Portland Housing Bureau is working on. So, I think, once that is in place, that actually will allow us a process whereby some things could be codified, some things could be more general in code, and then could be made into administrative rules. And we could iterate the administrative rules more quickly, as we learn what works or what we need to modify. But it'll only work if we really have a solid registry system.
It needs to be funded.
And, that's right, and so it needs to be funded, and that work needs to continue. So, I'm just advocating for that, even though I know that's not the subject of tonight. I do think that's a missing piece of this. And then, I guess I'll just finish by saying, you know, we will look over the amendments, and I'll get more feedback from others I work with, and get that back. I heard things tonight already, like example, talking about waitlists, I think that being made more explicit, that, you know, one way, first-come, first-served, by the way, is what a lot of landlords already do, that's what Reach does in a lot of cases, so that's fine. The waiting period seems to be what's causing problem, because there's some technical concerns, but also there's waitlist option, which we use a lot as well. So, that shows there are solutions, but this is going to take a lot of work. The technical things are something we worry about, and that's part of the reason why we're concerned about cost. But I do think we keep working at it, there are ways to achieve a lot of what we want.
Thank you. Commissioner Udaley, then Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you. We have heard from some affordable housing providers that have income ratios as low as 1.5x. What's the Reach ratio?
Right, I mean, it varies, but yeah, it's usually like 1.5, so yeah, we are, I mean, the income ratios are what concerns us, but again, we're affordable housing, so we have a different set of regulations, a different set of subsidies sometimes also, that allows us to accept that, and it's fine. But yeah, that's not something that's concerned us at any point. I, you know, I'm not a market-rate landlord, so I'm not, I don't want to speak for them, right? But for affordable housing, you know, we're at 2 or below.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, all three of you, appreciate it. Commissioner Hardisty, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Excuse me.
Dan.
Yeah, before you leave, my question is, how often have you met with Commissioner Udaley's staff over the last two and a half years, as they've been developing this proposal?
Oh, gosh. We've been involved in the ongoing meetings, so I don't know, probably 10 meetings, or something like that. I don't know, maybe you could correct, you might have the logs, but yeah, anyway, numerous meetings.
No, I mean, I asked that question because it sounds like you're surprised when you came in today and got the draft and saw the amendment, so I was just trying to figure out if you have been involved in the conversation for the last two and a half years. I'm kind of surprised that you have surprises today. Maybe it was the amendments that were dropped on us, oh, what, nine or 10 of them? Is that where your concerns are, in some of the amendments? I'm just trying to figure out.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, no, well, the amendments were new, and that's fine. Again, I think, that's what I'm saying, there's iteration, so I'm not surprised that they're amendments, but I haven't had time to fully digest them tonight.
Me either, I just got them too, so don't feel bad.
And then, there are some other elements that aren't new, that we still have some concerns about, and I have voiced those, but I think this is a complex proposal, and so, there are many other, you know, voices too, about, you know, maybe I express a concern, but there are many other voices saying why that may or may not be a concern. So, again, I understand, not everything I say is going to be taken into account, but there are still things that I'm not surprised by, I just know I've given my feedback and it hasn't been incorporated yet, and maybe it won't be, maybe it will be, I may have to say it four times, that's okay, you know, but that's where I'm at, so I'm still sharing my concerns.
Well, I appreciate that, and that's really the point that I was trying to get to, right? Everybody can have input, but just because you've had input doesn't mean that it will change the ultimate document that will be passed. I think we have to weigh a lot of concerns that people have raised. Like, for example, when we talked the median income last year, in the Portland metro area, it was $86,771. I don't know too many people making $86,771. So, when we talk affordable, if we say 80% of that, we're still talking around $72,000 a year. And again, I don't know a lot of people making $72,000 a year, so, I mean, we have to talk about this in context of, what are the wages in Portland, and how can people afford to live in Portland if the wages aren't going up as high as the apartment rents are going up? So, I, that's what I'm juggling, right? I feel bad that people might make a lot, a little less profit, but I don't feel as bad as I would if people are still living on the street, because they can't afford to live here. So, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next three, please, Carla.
Our Tyrone Poole, Sam Noble, and Chris Lowe, and they'll be followed by Joanna Burton, Keith Schultz, and Henry Kramer, who is number 21 on the list.
Number 21? 56.
Would you like to go ahead and start?
Sure.
Thanks, Carla.
My name is Tyrone Poole. I'm the founder of OneApp. Today, and since the last council, I've noticed that all these testimonies, everybody's really saying the exact same thing. Every single person here is for all of the access that this fair proposal brings to the table. The only difference is, some people are afraid of the risk that the proposal brings, and it's because we have put together some really out-of-the-box ideas to solve some of these problems. And we had to, because the fair proposal is the only proposal in the nation that is trying to address some of these really difficult problems. For example, we want to allow cosigners to only make three times the rent. The standard in the market is six times the rent. I completely understand why we wouldn't want to do that. I grew up, and my mom was never able to cosign for me. Why is that? Because she'd never made six times the rent. So, when I was 18 years old, I had to figure out a way to find a place without her help. And if this would have been the law, she would have been able to cosign for me, and I could have got a place. Who can get cosigners? Usually, white kids from privileged communities, and that's about it. So, but I'm also sober enough to understand that if I had not been responsible and caused myself to lose the housing, and say I racked a bill of $3,000, my mom would not have been able to cover it. So, at the same time, you have to understand that, how does the math work on three times the rent? Right? Like, does it make as much, will it have the same returns as six times the rent? It's a really new concept. We have the head-of-household concept, where we're saying that a person who's on the lease, if they meet their criteria, then the other people that don't meet the criteria, credit or other things, they still can live there. That's adding a brand-new dichotomy between people who live inside the house. They now, the way they work together is different. So, if I decide to skip, I can leave at any time without any consequence, which brings some risk to the market. Two times the rent is a brand-new concept. You know, so many new concepts to the market at the exact same time. And so, I absolutely want to see it happen, but my fear is around, if you launch, I get the scenario we're in, right? We have two choices. We can either deny a law that we know creates a tremendous amount of access, or we can pass an ordinance, or pass a law, that we know releases a ton of untested, brand-new concepts into the market, and we have no idea how they will turn out at the end of the day, which is where the danger is. And so, if I had to, those choices are two horrible options to choose from, to be honest. So, you've got landlords who are terrified about the new changes that they've never seen anywhere else, and that's really what it comes down to. How do we mitigate the risk of all of the new ordinances that have never been tested anywhere before making them at scale? We didn't say we're going to test this on two properties, at scale and in-city at the exact same time. That's the only risk that I see in the ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. My name is Sam Noble. I'm a super-small-time landlord. I ran out of room in my basement, there's an occupied ADU in my yard, and I ran out my old house. Normally, I'm only in front of this council for ordinances related to land use, but we continue to have a severe housing shortage, and our housing shortage can create scarier situations for all of the sort of usual, understood reasons. I'm also young enough that I still have friends who worry about finding their next place to live. I'm not a fan of the city making my life more complicated as a landlord, but I think the ordinance, or at least the framework of the ordinance, is reasonable. It spells out clearly how I can follow the rules, and the process seems like it can be automated by inexpensive property management software that many landlords already use. I've heard a lot of concern that, oh, our software doesn't support this, but it seems to me that we're not Ontario, Oregon, and this particular rental market is attractive enough that people will find reasons to support relatively straightforward requirements that you choose to impose. If you believe, like I do, that discretion is a driver of inequity, then I hope you'll continue to look for other opportunities to limit discretion, not just in the private rental market, but from, also from other city ordinances. I've read the entire, well, the entire screening portion of this ordinance, and I want to just talk about a couple specifics. I really don't like item G of the application identification criteria. I don't want to ever have to argue about what reasonable means in terms of non-governmental ID. I'd really, really like it if you would specify that the Housing Bureau is going to tell me what an acceptable list is, or that it's entirely up to me. Like, I just don't want this to be an issue for lawyers and a court. I'd also like you to acknowledge that it's really easy for a well-meaning landlord, new to the rental business, to be entirely unaware of these rules or how to follow them. I only found out about it because I'm kind of plugged in, because I've been getting these weird robo-calls over the last week and a half. So, if you're willing to amend this ordinance a little bit, one way you could acknowledge this is to pardon certain kinds of infractions before the first Schedule R is due for the owner of given property, provided that they haven't had, the particular property owner hasn't had to file that Schedule R in the past couple of years. It seems like a totally reasonable way to allow a little bit of grace and the opportunity for the city to say, hey, you're actually a landlord, here's some rules, and you need for the city to say, hey, you're actually a landlord, here's some rules and you need to start following them. I have only now just seen these amendments. Most of them seem pretty reasonable to me, and I just, I don't have the time and opportunity to comment intelligently, but if there's something, like, really significant, I will follow up in written testimony. Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chris Lowe. I live in the Woodstock neighborhood, and I'm a renter of half a duplex there. As I was thinking about this, three sort of points of reflection or reference occurred to me. One is the recent passage, both in the city and I think at the state level, of the sort of ban the box sort of idea when it comes to employment. That is, that using automated pre-screening methods just for managing time and, you know, money discriminates, that you're talking about automating discrimination, and that one of the things, oh, I should say, I'm here to support the amendments, as Commissioner Udeli said before. Anyway, that, automating the discrimination is, doesn't help, you know? The second thing is, I, some of you know that I'm a decades-long advocate for single-payer healthcare, and one of the better things about the ACA, although I, was the getting rid of banning people for quote-unquote "pre-existing" conditions. And I think that there is actually some analogy here, that that's essentially about corporate entities reducing their risks, and at the expense of a human right to healthcare. And I think here we're talking about largely corporate entities reducing their risks. I understand, you know, the highlighting of certain cases, it brings to mind Willie Horton, but anyway, the, I, I do think there's analogy there. The third is my experience in working for the We Are Oregon Community Organizing Project in 2012, where SEIU surveyed 40,000 households in low-income neighborhoods and asked what their issues were, and what, the top one was foreclosure at that time. And what was going on was people who had been inveigled into abusive mortgage agreements. And it was not due to the relaxation of standards, it was due to active intent to discriminate and take advantage of people. The last thing I wanted to say is that the very first person who testified said that the market has changed since she began being a landlord in the 1970s. I came to Portland in the 1970s. She's right. What has changed is the focus on rentals as an investment, not on the kinds of relationships she's talking about. And we heard that again and again and again from the landlord side of things, the big landlord side of things. We want it automated, it's going to cut into our profit margins. This is not about solving the housing crisis, it's about what happens to tenants who, once they've left, can they get housing again? And that's a different problem, and this, it's a good answer to it, I think.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, all three of you. Next three, please, Carla.
Our Joanna Burton, Keith Schultz, and Henry Kramer, and they'll be followed by Lindsay Holmes, Matt Kelly, and Molly McGrew, number 24.
Good evening.
Hi, this is my first time doing this, so.
Welcome.
I represent no agency. I just really want to bring back everybody to the human story about this whole housing crisis. I live in subsidized housing, which is being retrofitted for earthquake, and therefore, because I have now become employed, I can no longer stay in my subsidized housing unit. They're asking, with the HUD package, I could stay for an increase of almost 25% of my rent, or I can be paid to move out for 42 months. The problem with that is, is that I'm told I'm a success story. I'm a success story because I survived a DV situation, I have conquered addiction, I have stabilized mental health, I have regained employment, and I still have barriers. I can meet that three times income, but I can't meet the credit criteria. The credit criteria, and every time I go to apply to apartments, $50 a hit. It's not that there's one screening that happens through Pacific Screening. I get the same report from Pacific Screening at every time, and I can't get to see anything before I sit down with a deposit, okay? I don't understand all this jargon, people. I really don't. If I'm supposed to be a success story and I can't still rent, I can't have a credit score over four, I can't have an income debt ratio over 45%, everybody has something different, and it's locking me out. And so what's going to happen? I'm going to self-perpetuate the system that we've created, because I can't get out of subsidized housing, even though I have done everything, everything I have been told and asked to do, whether it was by a landlord, by a subsidizing agency, I am off all public assistance, yet I'm going to end up back on the street. That's the reality of what's happening with people today in affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Okay, I'm Keith Schultz, and I'm a 65-year-old disabled renter. Well, I was a renter until the first of the year, and I was locked out of my apartment. They, and I was, well, and I have lived in, that lady that was talking about, bought her first rental in 1974, that's when I moved to Portland, and I've been a renter for 45 years. I've had two evictions. It turns out, the first one, I got notice on it the day after relo was passed here. I was down here, and so the place I, they wanted to renovate my apartment so they could jack the rent up. So I found a place, dealing with Home Forward, because I've got a Section 8 voucher, I've been surviving on disability, now retirement, for many, many years, and so I've had two evictions in 45 years, they just happen to be about two years apart. And the place I moved into, they just didn't like me, so I, I've been out on the streets since the January 9th, and thanks to some people that I volunteer with, that they've kept me undercover in, in, like, a bedroom, basement bedroom or something for the last four months, and so, yeah, every time I check out a place, they're talking about paying that examination fee, I have to pay $40 to $50, and, you know? And I've even been denied from one of the biggest slum lords out in East County, twice.
You should get a, you should get an award for that.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Henry Kramer. I live in northeast Portland, I'm in favor of the fair standards. Spent roughly my first decade in Portland as a renter, now I'm a homeowner and a small landlord, a very small landlord. Been on both sides, and I know it'll be hugely helpful for tenants, and no big deal for landlords who behave morally. I'm bemused by landlords saying they're just here to protect tenants from themselves. Tenants are here speaking in favor of the fair standards. It's baffling to me that landlords come up and speak for tenants who can speak for themselves. Moral landlords don't mind this, because moral landlords don't discriminate. Moral landlords know that history and the justice system has no bearing on your ability to make rent, that bankruptcies happen because financial calamities happen, happened a lot during the Great Recession, and shouldn't haunt you for the rest of your life. Moral landlords already don't require exorbitant security deposits, because that's just a wealth requirement, and fundamentally, I kind of get why income requirements are necessary. Income requirement and a wealth requirement means that's an inherited wealth requirement, which is basically a whiteness requirement. The fair standards, oh, you know, moral landlords, we don't, we see these as forms of discrimination, there's sanitized racial discrimination, so moral landlords don't use them. The fair standards will only change the behavior of landlords who are clinging to the right to discriminate. They say that they haven't engaged enough in the process. That's crocodile tears. This has been going for years. They're never going to get to yes. How long does the city need to entertain the bad faith complaints of people who will oppose any reform that makes a difference? I, I hear pro-discrimination landlords scaremongering about the effects of the fair standards on supply. That's misdirection. I'm one of several people here, I think many people here, who are deeply in favor of supply-oriented reforms, who are also deeply in favor of this, because this is a housing security policy, and pro-supply policies and housing security policies work better together, they're stronger together. Landlords are not going to leave Portland over this? If you look at how much people charge for rent in Portland, the notion that a landlord's going to walk because they have to slightly change their software defies the sniff test. There are 10 Airbnb apps. We can't change a slight thing so you can sort based on a timestamp? I don't understand. Enacting the fair standards will be a lifeline for tenants who desperately need it, especially those who were rebuilding their lives after a catastrophic event. Moral landlords, it won't change anything. For pro-discrimination landlords, it'll be a mild inconvenience. This is not a hard call. Please vote yes.
Thank you. Thanks, all three of you.
I want to thank this panel, and Henry, have you ever watched Key and Peele?
Oh, the Anglo-translator.
I want to thank you for being my Luther today.
Thanks, all three of you. Next three, please, Carla.
Our Lindsay Holmes, Matt Kelly, and Molly McGrew, and they'll be followed by Tony Jordan, Anthony Bencivengo, and Ethan Harrison, number 27.
Folks, and again, a gentle reminder, thumbs up, thumbs down. Thank you. Would you like to go ahead and start?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Me and Wheeler, I appreciate that. For the record, my name is Molly McGrew. I am the lobbyist for Multifamily Northwest. I am two weeks into this experience. I want to say thank you to all of you for taking the time and going through a process of really looking at, through the lens of both equity and inclusion, how can we, how can we address longstanding institutional racism around housing? As the executive director already spoke to, many of the things that I think are also in line with some of your goals, they've also put out there too, around some of the challenges in which they have to achieve these objectives. As somebody who's just new to this, one of the things I like to do is really take in as much information as I can with listening to all of you. And if I can start with that and say, housing is a very complex issue. There was nothing I knew about housing before I took this client, and I would still say now, I'm still learning a lot about it, and especially around the rental housing market. So what I'd like to extend is an opportunity for the members of Multifamily to be able to sit down with you and walk you through the process of what it is to go through renting if you have never done that before, because I had not done that before. Secondly, I'd like to take the opportunity for you to educate us. What is this experience? Where is it occurring? How is it happening? And why? We may not be able to always flesh out the bad actors, but there's a lot of really good people who have been in the rental property business for many years, who have already testified here tonight to that experience. I think that's what's coming forward the most here, is that these amendments are new, and in some cases, they are amendments that may not do anything to address what's already currently in place. I brought up a rental application from Multifamily Northwest, and on the back, there's already in place the head memo of 2016 in terms of criteria for screening. I don't know if that's what we were speaking to earlier, but there's already a process in place to identify, in the screening application, issues that have been addressed here before around not being able to work through that. Secondly, I understand that the House Bill 2015, which is the driver's licenses for all bills, is currently in ways and means. And that bill is looking to move forward, which means that it would address some of the concerns around identifying a person who lives here in Oregon, and hopefully that can be utilized as a form of documentation. Lastly, I would hope that with regards to the screening and ordinances amendments that you've put out, that you take a look at how the impact of Senate Bill 608, which just passed, overlays with this, and then pick up from there and identify what aren't we doing? But again, with the lens that we all need to be at a collaborative table together, working through that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Matt Kelly, and I just want to be clear, I'm speaking as a private citizen today and not representing anyone but myself. I strongly support the fair standards. Like many people in Portland, my home is an apartment. As a white, middle-class man, it's relatively easy for me to rent. The fair standards would help extend the privileges I enjoy to others by helping remove unfair barriers to housing. And part of the reason I'm here today is because I received a flyer from Multifamily Northwest that implied really bad, dangerous people would move into my building if the fair standards pass. I resent, I resent these scare, scaremongering tactics, they make me, they disgust me. And I expect our elected leaders to pass policies based on facts, as Commissioner Udeli mentioned earlier, and not fear. And that, that is why I am here supporting the fair ordinance. It's time to pass the fair ordinance. It's the result of more than two years of public process. There have been more than 33 drafts. It's been vetted and negotiated across sectors, numerous meetings, hours of testimony, the level of gauging has been exemplary here. So while Portland also needs more housing supply, the fair standards are an important step toward improving housing security. Thank you for supporting it.
Thanks for being here. Good evening.
Hi there. My name is Lindsay Holmes. I am a property manager. I'm not here for my company or speaking as my company, but I think the, the goal of the entire fair process and what's been put together is heading in the right direction. Even as a lifelong property manager for the past 18 years, I've worked in eight different states, I think it's addressing the things that we, as people who work on the property for companies, can't but would like to. That being said, I think it's also important to make sure that not every landlord is a millionaire. I am certainly not the $86,000, you know, income that we had talked to, nor am I someone who's going to be able to make any, you know, giant changes within my company, but we do want these changes. We do want to be able to house more people and to be able to help more people, but I also understand the, the day-to-day process of it. In regards to things like IDs, requiring the state-issue ID is the only way that I can try to help protect whoever the ID is that that person owns. It's just as important to ensure that I don't have a stolen ID, that there is an identification that's been used that isn't that person, to protect someone who's innocent in a process where maybe it is a fraudulent application. So I understand why we could want additional processes and different things to be allowed, but what is going to safeguard the people whose identities could be stolen and whose credit could be ruined, potentially for life? With the income standards, I understand the want to drop it, but I also want to just let the community know, the gross income is at three times the gross amount. So when we're asking what it is that you're making to try to make sure that you are qualifying for the apartment, that's before tax. That's, you know, onsite, we do things where we work with people who, if they do have jobs that are based off of tips, if they do have jobs where they work overtime, we're not simply taking just whatever their base amount is, we're taking their total income into amount, whether they have side gigs, whether they, you know, drive Uber. We want to make sure that we, we can qualify everybody we possibly can, and we're doing it at a before-tax amount. So when we do that now, at the two times, at the before-tax amount, that's a significant decrease, or decrease in what they make per month. And as someone who is not a millionaire landlord, it breaks my heart every time I have to follow a fair housing policy to evict someone, because something has happened for them, whether it's medical, whether it's losing a job, whether it's any of those things, because I have to evict someone because I couldn't afford it, because one detrimental thing happened. And potentially, if they made more money, maybe they would have gotten out of that scenario. So just in closing, just, I wanted everybody to know landlords are humans too. We do want good things, we do want good, you know, positive change, but just remember too, that we're not the millionaires making all of the decisions. There are people making $36,000 a year who are having to abide by these laws and the regulations that you'll decide on.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, all three of you. Next three, please, Carla.
Our Tony Jordan, Anthony Bencivengo, and Ethan Harrison, and they'll be followed by Margot Black, Amy Dupree, and Loen Everett.
Good evening. Would you like to go ahead and start, please?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Commissioners. Sorry for confusion earlier.
No worries.
I'm here to support fair access in renting. I'm active in organizing around housing and transportation. Oh, I'm Tony Jordan, sorry. I'm active in organizing around housing and transportation issues, but solving our housing crisis isn't only about building much-needed supply, it's also about providing access and security for housing. It's been some time since I was in the rental market, but a few weeks ago, I was here to testify for this ordinance, and hearing the stories from other tenants moved me so much I had trouble delivering my own testimony. And I think the fact that we're here again is a testament to the work that the Commissioner has done to seek input and make adjustments to the policy, a process that's been going on for many years, like many policies that are much needed in this city. And I think it's time to pass the fair ordinance and move on to more anti-displacement policy and strategies to create more housing in our city. I didn't have to take a criminal check when I got my mortgage. I didn't have to take a criminal check when I got my mortgage. I don't run background checks on my neighbors. I have small children, and I want them to be safe, but I'm far more concerned about traffic, violence, and climate change than the people in my community. And for those who claim to be opposing this for the children, I think they need to think about what the, what about the children who aren't in their housing, who have to move schools regularly, or sleep in cars, or shelters, or in bad environments because their parents can't secure housing? I also ask you not to be moved by threats of people selling their rentals, or that this will crater the housing supply. I really can't say it any better than Henry Kramer did, so I won't try, but I strongly believe the city has a responsibility to serve those who most in need ahead of those with means. People who own zero homes are in more need of protection than people who own multiple homes. And contrary to the previous testimony, if you do own multiple homes in this city, you might not have a million dollars in your bank account, but you have a million dollars to your name. And please pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Ethan Harrison. I'm a genderqueer fag. I'm a worker, and I'm a renter. I live in northeast Portland. Good testimony. Way to go. I'd also like to second most of the testimony against fear mongering by landlords. Like, you got two houses, right? You can sell one of them, and then you can move into the other one, and you can still have more houses than like houseless people. So like, let's not pretend that it's like a hard equation here. To the testimony that I wanted to give, I wanted to first note, according to PHB staff at the last Renter Services Commission, a bureau which you oversee, Mayor, they shared that the landlord registry didn't receive funding in this year's budget. And I know that we're all sick and tired of hearing about the austerity budget that was proposed. We've been talking about it for a while. But I want to call for funding that program, because if we don't have the data, then we can't create the policy. And then, like the re-low conversation, we didn't have the data, and so we couldn't create the policy. So we should fund the rental registry system. I think the other thing... Oh, I just wanted to talk about how, for Portland Tenants United, which is an organization I'm a member of, but don't speak on behalf of, I answer phone, answer phone calls. I hear from renters who have mushrooms growing in their apartments. I hear from renters who, like in February, get discriminated against and denied housing based on their service animal. I have to tell them how they contact, you know, Fair Housing Council, but ultimately, if they can't get legal representation, it doesn't matter. But what I wanted to talk about and not ramble about was that in January, I spoke with Sheri. She and her family were living in a Portland family shelter with her young child and her husband. She was employed, her husband was employed, she'd saved some money for a deposit, and her family was desperately looking for rental housing. They kept getting denied based in part of, because of an eviction she had from about seven years ago. And I just wanted to note that this ordinance would go really far in materially helping families like Sheri, right? Those families that are checking off all the boxes, they're doing all the right things, and then they get to the door of a landlord, and the landlord says, "I really don't want you to live here. I'm sorry." And then they ask them why, and there's nothing that legally mandates them to answer why. The other thing was for Commissioner Fish, and I'm sorry that he had to go, but in 2011, when there was a really damning report that came out about housing discrimination here in the city, Commissioner Fish, in an Oregonian article, said that we needed to like, actually do something, right? That we needed to take action. And in a sense, I just wanted to encourage the commissioner to take this moment to vote and to do the right thing. And so that was my prepared testimony. Oh, I also wanted to note about the like, income, right? That we try to like, factor in everybody's gigs. In 2013, American Property Management didn't work with me, and they said that even though I had a job and my roommate had a job, that because they didn't qualify for the income, we couldn't have housing. So like, also, Multifamily, that email, Deborah, was like, really bad. You shouldn't send out those emails. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just, if I could just put a clarification on the table, I, I think what the individual may have been referring to when they said the rental registration system or the Office of Rental Services wasn't funded, it was in fact funded, and one of the add-on packages was funded, and then in the final budget, we even added more to the system. So the registration system is up and running. We have about $1.6 million that are going to community organizations. We have 10 community organizations. You can actually go to the rental services office. Right now, for those who are landlords, the schedule R is there, we're already collecting the schedule Rs. One of the add-ons that I put into the proposed, which my colleagues generously accepted, was a mediation service, so we'll be going into landlord-tenant mediation through community partners as well. And so-
So specifically, you funded the item that says the housing girl will allow me-
Yeah, I think the confusion-
Well, the housing girl will make a registry of all renter properties in Portland.
Right. So we protected the same level of funding that was in last year, and I think the confusion was there were add-on packages that we did not collectively choose to support in this budget.
All right. Thank you.
And it's not because we don't believe it's important. We'll continue to add the additional services to it with time. We just couldn't do it all this year.
I, I think I said correctly. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. You're, excuse me, you're out of order. You're out of order, and if you interrupt, you will be asked to leave. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Anthony Benzavengo, and I'm a volunteer with Portland Tenants United. As my colleague Margot was pointing out, my colleague Margot Black, to be clear, preserving existing levels of funding for the rental services office, and I am very glad that existing funding was at least preserved for the rental services office. I'm very excited for the services it provides.
And additional funding was put into it.
Along with the additional funding, I'm definitely excited about the mediation program.
Thanks.
But the issue with the rental registration system is that it's already, you know, it's already been approved by the council and is, is up and running. Forms are sent out to landlords, but it's not simply enough to take existing staffing levels at the agency sending those forms out, and send out a very basic form that simply asks landlords to just put down what units they own with very little other information, and not fully fund staff and infrastructure to really implement that, to check up on it and make sure landlords are filling out that information accurately, or to add any of the other information that it's really essential that we collect from landlords. We, you, you know, Mayor Wheeler, promised in your State of the City address in 2017 that this rental registration system would be used to track evictions. There's no way to really do that right now in any sort of reliable way. Community, all sorts of community advocates have been asking you to use that system, the rental registration system, to figure out things like what the rents on these rental units are, how many are sitting vacant, how many are accessible for people with disabilities and where those are, whether their screening criteria will actually comply with the fair ordinance that we're talking about. None of those things can be done with the rental registration system unless it actually receives additional funding. And it is extremely disappointing that, especially when in the past, you have argued that we can't pass progressive policies because we don't have enough data, that you would not make it a priority to provide the bare minimum level of funding to make sure we can actually collect that data with the rental registration system. Going back to the fair ordinance itself, I just want to say that as a tenant organizer, I can't tell you how many times I've heard from tenants that they are afraid to assert their legal rights because they know that even though retaliation is illegal, if a landlord takes us to court for an eviction, justified or not, and that gets on our record, or if they refuse to give us a reference, or they give us a bad reference, it is a lot harder for us to find a new home and be able to qualify. This is known as the landlord blacklist, and tenants who already face barriers due to poor credit, low income, family status, or immigration status, or, you know, race and gender discrimination, which is a huge problem in this city, whatever people may say, are especially vulnerable to landlord blacklisting. And that practice needs to be ended by passing the fair legislation. So we need to pass the fair legislation without further delays, reinstate supplementary evidence, reject Wheeler's amendments to weaken it, and let's fully fund rental registration as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks all three of you. Next three, please.
Our Margot Black, Amy Dupree, and Lauren Everett. And they'll be followed by Barrett Ross, Nico Sarah, and Alan Kessler, number 34.
Good evening. You want to go ahead and start?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Lauren Everett, and I'm a tenant advocate, renter, and doctoral student in PSU's Urban Studies Program where I study housing. So I just wanted to make a few points in response to some of the criticism we've heard so far about this legislation and at the last hearing. So the current industry standard income screening ratios do not reflect the economic reality in our city and region. Half of Portland renters are already rent burdened and spend more than one-third of their income on rent. 28% are severely burdened, meaning they spend more than 50% of their income on rent. Yet they continue to pay their rent, and landlords seem unconcerned about these ratios when they increase rents. Number two, an assessment process that consists of checking a series of boxes does not reflect the nuanced realities of many individuals' complicated experiences. Using metrics like credit history is illogical and arbitrary. Rental history should be the most important consideration. Three, while the proposed new process and evaluation metrics will in some cases entail additional work and training, being a housing provider is a serious responsibility, and that is a reasonable expectation given our housing crisis. We realize this will be an adjustment to business operations for some landlords, but evolution in response to changing markets and conditions is a part of every industry. The medical, banking, and food and beverage sectors, just to name a few, are not able to opt out of evolving industry regulations because it is inconvenient or expensive. In their email to constituents, Multifamily Northwest says this legislation, and I quote, "removes consumer guardrails that prevent renters from entering into financially risky housing situations, leading to an increase in forecause evictions. In an economic landscape where the gap between wages and rents continues to expand, the alternative to a financially risky housing situation may be either to leave the region entirely or to become unhoused. That is the actual choice that many individuals are presented with. And finally, we are not consumers, and housing is not a commodity. We are residents of this city, and housing is a human right." Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good e-, excuse me, good evening. Before my time starts, can I ask, Amy Dupree, who was also supposed to be up here, is one of four or five tenants who were planning to be here and were signed up and is not here, and I'm wondering if I could have like, two of their three minutes to just share like, a 30-second snippet of their story, because I believe there are new, you know, components of the screening criteria in addition to my own testimony?
Chloe, this is your show, your call.
That sounds perfectly reasonable.
Go for it.
We're trading one and a half for six testifiers.
Yeah. Well, my three, and then, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, yes, like you said. Okay. I'm going to start with that, with, with them. So, so a little context, I just started sitting in on a rentability course, which is similar to Rent Well and Ready to Rent. And I just want to share that that room is, there's one other white person, and the rest are people of color. And we've spent, on this past Saturday, three hours talking about how to essentially prepare a portfolio or get, get approved for your application. And the anxiety on their faces and the different questions was palpable. They have evictions, they have kids, they have credit, and they, and none of them are people who wouldn't be able to pay the rent and, and take care of the unit. One of them is Janine with six kids. She had an eviction that could have been easily dismissed or prevented if she'd had access to any legal counsel whatsoever. She's lived in a hotel, or a motel, with her six kids for the last 1.5 years. One of her questions during the Rent Well class was, "What do I put for previous landlord if I lived in a hotel for 1.5 years?" That's the reality of evictions in this town. Okay? Amy has five kids. She's a former PPS, no, she's a current PPS school teacher. She just was recently married and moved into her husband's apartment and applied, when CNR Management, who's a big member of Multifamily Northwest, asked her to fill out an application, she did. She actually makes more money than her husband. They denied her because she filed bankruptcy last September. And she asked if they could appeal, she could appeal, and they said, "We don't do that." So what do you do when you move in to your husband's apartment where he's already been paying the rent, and they tell her that she's not approved to live there? That's the status quo, y'all. Okay? My daughter London is a college student. She wanted to come and talk about her friends who, who have had to put in egregious deposits and get cosigners because they have insufficient rental history and insufficient credit. The house that she and three friends currently share, the landlord is holding $7,500 in security deposits from these four college students because of insufficient rental and credit history. Let me ask you, is college students trying to like, just get a leg up and develop some autonomy? Do you, I mean, who can afford that? Okay? And then, Areli, who is a Latina woman who has sued her landlord and been in the press for that, they are trying to find housing, and her partner makes well over three times the rent. She doesn't, because she's disabled related to an injury at that apartment. All of the property management companies are requiring her to also make three times the rent, and they are denying her. They have lost hundreds of dollars in application fees. That's also CNR Management. And then Karina, a maintenance man told her that he heard the landlord tell the property manager, "When two men walked in to apply for a one-bedroom apartment, find a reason to deny them. It goes against my values." And I want to make it very clear that Oregon state law allows them the leniency to say in a denial letter, "The unit has been rented to someone else," or poor rental references. Zero recourse to know what was said, by whom, to even see if the rental unit has been rented. This is the way around the Fair Housing Act, and the fair ordinance corrects that. And it is incredibly important for people in our community that that happen. That's the end of that testimony. Okay. Now I'm Margot Black, co-chair of Portland Tenants United, which is a registered lobby organization, and I'm a registered lobbyist for the city of Portland. I had prepared testimony. I want to address the amendments, some of which I'll have to send comments later, but first I need to say, you know, Mayor Wheeler, I helped you write the Tenants Bill of Rights. I came to your campaign kickoff, I canvassed for you, and I just need to ask, like, where the hell have you been? I mean, when you, at last month's hearing, when you said you needed to take this complex policy and hand it to people smarter than you, you have the Housing Bureau. We have been working on this for two years. You are liaison, who sometimes comes to Rental Services Commission meetings to check his text messages and then leave. You, you need to have better communication with the Rental Services Commission, of which we are citizens donating our time, and the public, and not show up like this is the first time you've heard about this policy. I am just, I am insulted that these amendments came out yesterday, and I, I just want to say that. Okay. Amendment one, I actually want to share some feedback on the 72-hour notice requirement. I actually agree, in some part, with the landlords that this is going to be an administrative burden, with one caveat, at scale. The 72-hour window is, is made for people who need accessible dwelling units, for people who need large, family-friendly dwelling units, for people who maybe need something at the right price and the right neighborhood, and it's a single-family home, or a plex, or in a small apartment complex. Those are the types of units that go fast, and they go to the people who have the most privilege to be on Craigslist constantly, who have, who can get to the rental, who can sweet-talk the landlord, who are the kind of person the landlord is looking for. I would recommend that we, that 72-hour notice apply only to complexes under 20 units, and for type A accessible units, all of them, and for three, or three bedrooms or more, because those are the ones that families desperately need. I understand the, the concern about the first-come, first-served that you brought up last time, Commissioner Fritz. It's, I, I also prefer a lottery system, but it is better than, than the status quo, which just allows you to pick your favorite tenant. Okay? And so that's why we have the 72-hour, and that's why we have the, the first-come, first-served. It's 72-hour in order to give the people who have the least resources to find the units they need, ability to apply, and the, and the first-come, first-served to avoid the discretionary renting. Amendment, some of these amendments I'm going to have to get some feedback on. I would like to say on amendment three, where it says preferential access for accessible dwelling units will be given to people with mobility disabilities. I'd like to hear from the disability community about that, but I do, I, my hunch is that it requires more detail. Alan Hines, who's also a member of the Rental Services Commission, has said at almost every single meeting, folks in wheelchairs do not know where the units that they need to live in are, and we need to make sure that they are connected to those units, and we need to make that a top priority.
Your, your time is well expired at this point. Thank you.
And we'll take written testimony. Thank you.
And Margot, I would be happy to come and present to the rental service commissions on the many things that the Housing Bureau is doing, that I'm doing, and that my colleagues are doing. I'm either happy to come or not. It's your call. Next three, please.
It's not that we need to know what you're doing.
I, I heard you.
We are both to advise council.
No, I heard you for five minutes. Next three, please.
And we do not have, there's no evidence that you've ever listened to any of our advice.
I, I heard you. Margo, you're out of order. I heard you. I'm extending an offer, you can take it or leave it, it's up to you. Next three, please.
Our Barrett Ross, Nico Sarah, and Alan Kessler, and they'll be followed by Jackie McGee, Pam Ferry, I believe it is, and Amy Cleveland.
And so, folks, because the hour is getting late and there's people who really are waiting to testify, I'm going to hold everybody to three minutes, and my colleagues, we agree on this, and I'm going to ask respectfully that testimony be kept to the matter at hand today. If we could please do that, I appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is the mic on there, is the light on?
Hello, my name's Alan Kessler. Uh, I am a very small-time landlord. I built an ADU in my backyard and my family moved into it. And now we have a property manager who rents out the front unit. I'm here to support the ordinance, I'm here to support FAIR. The, I can't do justice to several of my YIMBY friends who showed up here to, to support this as well, but in general, the group of people that I like to associate with, we support lots of housing and we support FAIR rentals, and we think that the only way to undo the century of violence and injustice that's been done to populations is to have enough housing and have that at an affordable price. So, uh, you need to have both, and I think you need to have anti-displacement measures first, uh, so that's why we're here and strong support. I am frustrated by some of the same boogeymen that, uh, uh, Multifamily Northwest and the, the various people in this room have been, been throwing out here. If you have nine houses, if you've been a landlord, if you live off of dead labor, uh, you know, it, it doesn't, we shouldn't, yeah, I'm not, nobody's crying for you. Honestly, I, uh, I don't think that, uh, I'm sorry, um, the, the, the goal should be to get to a place where buying, where getting a rental is like buying a seat on an airplane or buying a hotel room. It's a sterile transaction, all of the rules are set upfront, uh, there's no discretion for the people involved to look at you and see if you look like a good kid or not. Uh, that shouldn't be the way that we, we allocate our housing resources. And, uh, the way to get there is to move to a, a purely sterile database system. The idea that the software isn't, won't be able to calculate an eight-hour window is absurd. Uh, it's, it's, it's silly, and I, I hope you see through that FUD. Hopefully, what this is moving to is a place where we can have, hopefully, a city-run rental resource that will take all of this fat out of the rental housing system, where Multifamily Northwest won't be able to hire a lawyer because they won't have that much extra income to, to throw at resources to try to distort the housing market. Hopefully, we can make housing into a fungible commodity like other products. I mean, Soren, Soren doesn't want that, Soren wants, uh, city-owned housing, and I fully support that goal too, but as a step to get there, I think fungibility is great. So, so taking all of the, all of the waste that's going into the people here trying to fight this innocuous law and give that back to, to tenants is, I think, a noble goal.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, um, Commissioners, Mayor, my name is Barrett Ross. Uh, I'd like to preface my testimony by saying I can't imagine, um, my personal experience, what would that be like if I had to face racial discrimination on top of everything else? Um, because we know these audits have found appalling rates of discrimination among landlords in Portland. Um, I've always wanted to rent an apartment in Portland, but I've given up hope, you know, for over two years, I've been living in a motorhome, particularly having a park on the street, deal with police harassment and vehicle crime. It's a serious barrier to me starting a family, being civilly engaged, and completing my apprenticeship. Last time I applied to rent an apartment was in 2016, before I was houseless, I was living in an apartment in Milwaukee. I applied at the Beverly Grove Apartments in the Gateway District, and the manager, Barbara Martin, denied my application, blatantly violated Oregon law by rejecting me on the basis of drug charges from 2009 when I was a teenager. Uh, I've never been convicted of a crime. Uh, when I called her out, she said Oregon law doesn't matter because her management company, Tryon Properties, is based in California. She then sent me a letter saying nothing about the drug charges, claiming that I was rejected because of my income. And the FAIR Housing Council told me that the maximum damages I was entitled to was $50 under current Oregon law. Um, anyway, I'm a union carpenter, I want to help build Portland, especially want to build affordable housing that's city-owned and permanently affordable in this city. Um, and, but in the meantime, um, best thing that we can do is pass FAIR without the delayed implementation by October 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Nico Sarah. I'm a mixed-race queer and transgender person with disabilities, and I volunteer with people with disabilities as a board member at Real Choice Initiative. We endorse this measure and are especially excited that it stipulates accessible units are prioritized for people who need them. Although I do want to speak directly to the amendment proposed tonight, that there are other populations besides those with mobility impairments that need universal design. We are available to continue that discussion if you are to. While I'm here to voice my support for this ordinance, I also want to register my concern that as I understand it, the city budget did not provide funding for the rental registry. Let's be clear, this is a tool that would help the most vulnerable populations in the city. There is a severe shortage of housing that's accessible and affordable, and the registry has a potential to enumerate the city's housing stock while providing critical data to inform policy decisions, such as the creation of more accessible housing. Two weeks ago, I heard the Portland Housing Bureau bond proposal. Several priority populations were listed with an asterisk and a smaller italicized words beneath them stating, "People living with a disability is an important populat- or important group included in the framework that often intersects one or all of the above communities." Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, uh, people with disabilities are a part of every community, and we are not measured in any significant way by the city at this point. So how are you gonna build a frame with no measurements? And speaking of priority populations, I want to encourage you all to consider adding transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming people to priority populations, as HUD has explicitly stated that they do not consider us a protected class, and we are by far the most marginalized within the LGBTQI2SA communities. Try to imagine being at the intersection of, of poverty, race, gender, and disability. People like me have very few options when it comes to accessible and affordable units. In fact, many of us end up in institutions, on the streets, or in prison. I'm very concerned about the lack of equity in the implementation strategy for the Housing Bureau bond. It's kind of like the All Lives Matter policy, um, for housing, and we need to do better for that. We have a forward-thinking city here, and we, we hear you talk all the time about how you want to prioritize marginalized populations, and I know you can do that better. I also want to share a little bit of my own personal story. Although I have never damaged a property, I lost nearly $1,000 last year in security deposits, which was devastating for me on a social security budget. Most people on social security budgets make about $12,000 a year, so that makes it impossible for us to get the three times your rent requirement. And I also want to say I've been living here for nine years, and I've never once lived in an accessible unit. I hope you give me a little extra time as one of the marginalized folks. Thank you. Our only choice is to get on the Section 8 waiting lists and the voucher waiting lists. There is an 18-year wait for accessible Section 8 housing. So, I'm, I'm here, I have depended on the kindness of others to stay off the streets, and I am here to put a face on the struggle that far too many of us face because there's not enough housing for people with disabilities. So in summary, marginalized people need the housing registry with accessibility included in order to ensure that we, um, and, and also need you to ensure that we are a part of the priority populations as well as transgender people, and we need you to reassess the equity lens of the implementation strategies of the housing bond, so that we can, so that we can all collectively truly improve the, the lives of those most marginalized. So I really want to encourage you all and say thank you so much for prioritizing this, for staying late. I know everybody's probably really cranky right now at this point, and I just want to say thank you for listening to me, and please vote yes for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks all three of you. Commissioner Hurdisty.
Uh, thank you. Thank you all so much for your testimony tonight. Uh, you know, I'm troubled by that word marginalized, because I don't think those communities marginalize themselves. I think those communities have been marginalized by public policy, by having lack of access. Um, and so it's kind of like the word equity, right? Everybody talks equity, but at the end of the day, if the outcomes don't shift, then we don't have an equitable community. And so I, I don't like it when we embrace words that other people put out there that are supposed to represent our lived experience. And so I, I have a hard time with that word marginalized, because we didn't do it to ourselves. It was like, and Spike Lee says, you know, uh, uh, that Plymouth Rock fell on us. It's not like we, we, you know, we, we did it the opposite way. So I, I, language is powerful, and I just hate that we embrace words that take away from who we are, because it's not, it's not our fault, it's, it's the other guys.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, and I just want to further this point that anyone in this room could be in my shoes tomorrow.
Ah, that's a great story.
Okay? Y'all could go out on the street and have an accident and be in the hospital tonight and be in a wheelchair tomorrow. So, do you want to be in a nursing home? Do you want to be in a rehab? Have you been to these places?
Yep.
That's everybody's worst nightmare. I know we can do better. Portland is known for doing better. Let's do better with this.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks all three of you. Next three, please.
Our Jackie McGee, Pam Ferry, I believe is last name, and Amy Cleveland, and they'll be followed by Ariel Lopez, London Clanner, and Doug Klotz.
Please, Scott.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for having me here. My name is Jackie McGee, and I would like to say some things in behalf of the disabled and the senior communities. I would like to say in addition to the, um, proposals that maybe, um, the senior people and disa- they, disabled people that are on a fixed income should be exempt from the percentage rates that are supposed to increase the rents. I think that would be a good idea, and it would sure be helpful to prevent more homelessness because of the discrimination, or I should say ageism, and the disableism that the seniors and the disabled people experience with landlords thinking, "Oh, they're so old, I don't want them to live here," or "They might die here," or some other improper thoughts that they might have. And I think that's basically all I want to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your perspective. Thank you for being here. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Amy Cleveland. Um, I am in property management, have been since 2006. I also was a renter up until very recently, um, and have, in my personal life when I was 19, was evicted, lived in my car until I found somebody that would take me in. So I, I do understand the renter side of it. Um, I can say as far as most landlords go, I've worked for really large management companies. The smaller ones, I can't say as much for. The large management companies do have a lot of things in process to make sure that their people on a broad scale are following FAIR housing. Part of that is the automated, uh, application system, so people applying online, they can go through, be screened, um, and have an approval without the team ever meeting them. And that really is to make sure that nobody is playing favorites, so that nobody's saying, "Well, I like this person's personality better," or "I think this person, you know, seems like they might fit with this neighbor better." It's really to take that aspect out to protect against FAIR housing. Um, and so you've heard from a couple of different people in regards to the 70-hour, 72-hour notice rule and the eight hours, and a lot of the systems that are being used right now, like Yardi, OneSite, Tenant Tech, Entrada, some of the bigger management softwares, they're not set up for that. So I would encourage you guys to, um, to look into the software and those capabilities because, you know, it's not something that the companies are trying to make, um, more difficult, it's really to take that, uh, subjective aspect out of it so that they're not, you know, renting to somebody based on an opinion. Uh, one of the other big issues that I've seen in my tenure as a property manager is problems with ID. So two specific problems that I want to make sure that you guys are aware of is, one, fraud, which we're seeing more and more frequently with rental rates going up. Um, and so requiring a government ID is to help protect, you know, people from having their identity stolen. Um, it's not 100%, you know, foolproof, but it does provide that extra step. On the other side of that, Portland is a very international city, and we have a lot of people from other countries that are here on a specific timeframe with their visa. And so if we can't require some sort of a government-issued ID, it's possible that their, their legal ability to stay in the U.S. may expire during a lease term without us knowing about it and then be deported and not be able to fulfill their lease term or the rest of, um, the amount of rent that they owe. So something for you guys to consider. The other item I really want you to consider is, uh, the rent-to-income ratio. So as Lindsay Holmes mentioned earlier, for most property management companies, that is based off of the gross rent, not the net rent. So you do need to factor in what they're losing in taxes. So if you think about what you supposedly make each year or each month, and then you think about what actually hits your bank account, there is a discrepancy there, and you want to make sure that you're adequately providing people the ability to make their rent. Same thing for the guarantor.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pam Fawn, um, for the record, and I serve as the Policy and Organizing Director at the Community Alliance Tenants. I'm hoping that my testimony can help serve to answer the question that Multifamily Northwest put forward tonight, which is how do we actually address some of the complex racial equity issues with this policy? So Portland and its city government has been on a multi-year journey of self-discovery and recognition of race, racism, systems of white supremacy that currently uphold inequities for poor and working people, many of whom are black and brown. In 2015, City Council adopted Portland's first-ever citywide racial equity goals and strategies, in which Goal 3 states that the city will, will collaborate with communities and institutions to eliminate racial inequity in all areas of government, including housing, among other things. And in 2016, the Council also adopted Portland's 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which includes Chapter 5 Housing. There are three policies in there I'd like you to think about, and they require the city to work affirmatively, work to affirmatively further FAIR housing by removing regulatory barriers to housing choice for people in protected classes to ensure freedom of choice in housing type, tenor, and location. In addition, the comp plan requires that the city coordinate plans, investments, and programs that enable communities impacted by involuntary displacement to maintain social and cultural connections and reestablish a stable presence and participation in the impacted neighborhoods they are from. Many here today may know this history, and many, some here may have lived it. Portland African-American Leadership Forum estimates that more than 12,000 black African-American residents historically living in the Albina area have been involuntarily displaced throughout the region, triggered by development and other actions that the city knowingly has taken. When CAT, with numerous groups and black and brown leaders at the Anti-Displacement Coalition pushed the, pushed to include tenant protections and FAIR housing in the comp plan, we had a very clear vision, that the first step to stabilize renters of color was through screening criteria and deposit reform. In short, the purpose of such reform is to eliminate the dejour racial and economic segregation that has occurred through rental housing market in Portland. Today, when these tenants are unjustly and involuntarily displaced from their homes, they are much more likely to get screened out of rental opportunities and not of their own choices, but rather in large part due to current underregulation allowing landlords too much discretion that leads to a disparate impact on race and income. The FAIR ordinance must be explicit about who, who it intends to gain access to safe and stable rental housing. So very quickly, in order for this to be successful, we have to, we cannot center just your average renter, or we'll lose any potency that the, that, that is required, or that is possible. So FAIR housing cannot be affirmatively forward of barriers that screen out, um, people of color and low-income renters, such as income requirements that are two and three times the rent, making it merely only optional for landlords to accept family and friend support as stated, as stated income, and giving little guidance for a high level of individualized discretion for appeals.
Thank you.
Just three more points.
Thank you.
Can you just send it to us in writing, please?
We, we, we stop for, we can't be inconsistent, we need to be consistent. Next three, Commissioner Daley.
I do want to thank U-PAN for being here, and thank Anti-Displacement PDx. The first time I came to testify to council before I was elected was to support those 11 anti-displacement measures. I want to tell you that I have held fast to them and have now, uh, sparked a kind of plan for multiple bureaus to work together to ensure that we are for multiple bureaus to work together to ensure that we are actually implementing them as well as a directive to fund some projects. So, I appreciate your testimony and all your hard work.
And just so you know, I actually comprehend better when I read. So, for everybody who had more to say, please send it to me. I promise I'll read it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate you being here. Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you. I guess it's okay that they're leaving. I guess, I just want to say that I'm concerned that there's been this campaign that's been feeding misinformation to the public to try to get people to be more discriminatory than they already are. And let me just say that I don't need anybody else tonight to tell me that most landlords don't discriminate because if that was true, we would not be having this conversation tonight. So, you can just take that out of your lexicon for this evening and just know how disappointed I am that adults can't debate a policy issue without trying to scare people using race, socioeconomic status, and former criminal convictions to try to fear, scare people into doing the wrong thing. So, I'm done.
Very good. Next three, please, Carla.
Doug Klotz, Madeline Kovacs, and Walter Norton. And they'll be followed by Mercedes Eliz, Elizold, sorry, something, and Edith Castorline. So, right now, it's Doug Klotz, Madeline Kovacs, and Walter Norton.
I'm Doug.
Very good. Why don't you go ahead and start, please?
I'm Doug Klotz.
Doesn't sound like it's on.
He has the.
It's on.
It is?
Yeah. You just, no, it's off now.
Now?
There you go. That's the right.
All right, good. Doug Klotz, I, I support housing and I support anti-displacement measures they recently brought up. And I do support these substitute ordinances. It's been through a thorough public process over two years, I hear, vetted with landlords and tenant organizations. And this is not about housing supply, but it's about housing security. Both are essential parts of the solution. I hear this concerns about the software. You know, I think in Portland, Oregon, we could probably find somebody who could rewrite the software.
They've got nine months to figure it out.
And the other thing, I remember when, when I was young, I often rented apartments that were like, using half my income. Somehow, that seemed to work out. Of course, that was because I was a young, privileged, white guy. But it, this business of having to have three times their, your, the rent, you know, it's, that's new to me. I mean, I, the last time I rented at least, I was two times. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I support the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of Sightline Institute in support.
Who are you?
My name is Madeline Kovacs. Thank you. I'm testifying today for Sightline Institute in support of fair. And I would have liked to tailor my testimony a little bit more to the specific amendments. I just got off a train from Seattle, so I'm going to read them with vigor tonight. But those of you who know me, hear me testify all the time about the need for zoning reform, building enough housing, and fully funding affordable housing. But without community stabilization tools, like strong anti-displacement support and fair tenant screening, these zoning and funding tools will still be incomplete. The first fifty years of the Fair Housing Act have taught us that fair and equitable access to housing requires action on multiple fronts. Measures to increase housing options, fully fund regulated, affordable, and supportive housing, and stabilize communities need to complement and reinforce one another. Sightline recently reported that, thanks to the Fair Housing Act, relegalizing fourplexes could sharply boost Portland's production of universally accessible homes at a moment when aging baby boomers will make our shortage of such homes more dire than ever. But this is of little use to people with mobility issues if they all end up housing the young and able. We also know that relegalizing missing middle housing could redirect Portland's homebuilding industry away from luxury McMansions and toward less expensive market rate and below-market social housing. But even these homes will fail to provide true housing choices for Portlanders who most need it if they are subject to discrimination, even unconscious discrimination in a landlord's inbox. We need to remain focused on impacts and on outcomes. We need to take steps to reevaluate and do it again. As I stated before, Council before, there does not have to be insidious intent for a policy to have discriminatory impact. We know what the impacts are here. We know. The same people who suffer from discriminatory land use and financial policies in housing frequently suffer from discrimination in application of screening criteria. This is, this is not new. I would not be here today if I had concerns that fair would take lots of homes off the market, make our underlying housing shortage worse, or put upward pressure on prices. I'm here because we need to take measures that will benefit people experiencing acute housing stress, housing insecurity, and, yes, discrimination. We have to ask ourselves where the burdens of our policy decisions fall. I believe that fair will begin to rectify the currently unacceptable status quo, which leaves those in danger of losing housing or never obtaining it with zero resources or recourse. We have a chance today to dismantle a clear barrier to housing for impacted communities and better follow HUD's affirmatively furthering fair housing guidance, and we should take it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks you both. Next three, please.
Our Mercedes Elazadel, I believe, Edith Castorline, and Sharon Eldridge. And they'll be followed by Philip Joseph, David McCoy, and Ralph Laspirance.
Very good. Why don't you go ahead and begin, please?
My name is Mercedes Elizold. I work for Central City Concern. I'm the Public Policy Director there. Thank you for giving me some time tonight. We had a member of our Flip the Script Housing Specialist Team here for the invited testimony a couple of months ago. Also, I want to thank Commissioner Hardisty. I think we've had you out to do tours twice in just three months. Thank you very much for your time. Flip the Script is a program that's specifically for African-Americans in our reentry programs. Initially, the program was funded by My Memorial Trust to support an advocacy agenda, and we thought that that was going to really push towards criminal justice reform. But by and large, the thing that the folks who are coming out of that program want to see us work on is housing and housing access. Over the two years of the program, we've done a little bit of analysis about what some of the successes and what some of the barriers are for folks. We found that a lot of people coming out of that program are having a really hard time finding additional housing. The folks in our reentry program tend to be a little bit different than people in other central city programs, which usually focus on people with a lot more complex health issues and a lot more barriers to stabilization. A lot of the folks in the reentry program actually are able to get employed, get stable, get healthy, in a very short amount of time. And so, that means they usually don't qualify to live in central city housing once they're complete in their program, which means they need to have access to market housing. Unfortunately, they're having a very hard time accessing that housing. And what we learned in looking at those who were able to access housing is that the recidivism rate for those who are rent responsible, which means that they are the leaseholder on the apartment that they're living in, is almost more than ten, ten percent less than the average state recidivism rate and the recidivism rate in Montanhome County. So, for those who are really concerned about safety, we can really find a lot more safety in our communities if we house people. When, I also sent you all a letter that was signed by thirty participants and former participants expressing their support for the program. I know there's been also some conversation about the rent-income ratios. One thing I want to say about that is with the new proposal that's in the, the new, the substitute. You, if you look at a unit that's below eighty percent AMI, say a thousand dollars, and a unit that's above eighty percent AMI, say fifteen hundred dollars, it's a studio apartment. In both scenarios, one would have, both would have fifteen hundred dollars of excess income after paying their rent. And so, I think it really shows how it can level some of that playing field. And if landlords are really concerned about financial feasibility of the tenants, I think that that does a fair way of doing it. And if that's not really the concern, then I think going back to two times the rent is probably safe. And I guess the, the last thing that I'll say is that I really appreciate the time that the Commissioners take in with this and letting Central City Concern be a good partner in providing lots of feedback.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Edith Castorline, co-leader along with Richard Greenstead of Rental Providers for Positive Change. We're a new group who, together as rental providers, learn about and share practices and policies that are pro-tenant, pro-community, and pro-environment. This is our draft criteria for supporting policies and practices. One, does it pertain to making housing options more equitable and stable and/or with increasing the safety net? Two, is it or would it be supported by tenant advocates as being a step toward fairness? Three, does it seem to us to be an improvement ethically? Four, is it doable? Five, is it simple enough that landlords can adhere to it? For the new city policy changes on screening and deposits, I think all of those questions can be answered with a yes. I appreciate the hard work that was put into simplifying these policies over previous versions. I personally currently have four rental units. Over the years, I've struggled with how to make tenant screening an understandable and fair process, so this is a welcome change in the right direction. I encourage other landlords to be open to the changes, and I encourage the city to revamp and restart the landlord training program to help us more confidently follow new policies and to be more knowledgeable about fair housing practices. I'm going to cut it off because my fourteen-year-old wants to get home.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Eldridge, and I volunteer with Community Alliance of Tenants, CAT. I'm going to keep mine shorter than three minutes as well because many people have already said things that have been on my mind and heart. But I work specifically with a letter-writing clinic at CAT, so I'm not a hotline expert. I'm not, I'm not trained on all like renters' rights and whatnot, but I help people write letters to their landlords. And the common theme that I see when I sit down with a tenant is vulnerability. People come in to me agitated, scared, and when, what echoes in my mind is someone referring to tenants as consumers, and I, I cannot see them as consumers when I'm, when they come to write a letter with me. I've never seen a consumer of a product in that kind of mental state. It's, I think housing is a human right, and I think we need to treat it as such. I know that it's a business for other people, and I don't know how we ended up that way. If that's what it is, and I, I think that's why we're such at odds in this discussion. People I work with are at the mercy of these landlords, and I know not all landlords are exploiting tenants, but I just have encountered too many who are. And I just think we need to make the priority protecting tenants. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks all three of you. Next three, please, Carla.
Our Philip Joseph, David McCoy, and Ralph Laspirance. How about Kirsey Coleman? Kristen Bassett? Sammy Black.
Would you like to go ahead and start, please?
Sounds good. My name is Lindsay Ergenicon. I am completely not a public speaker, so this is horrible. So, I just wanted to come up here and kind of talk a little bit about my experience. I'm actually, I'm a landlord. I'm pretty young to be one. Growing up, my mother actually partnered with Safe House, Safe Alternatives in Minneapolis. During this time, we also moved about twenty times because we were not making enough money to actually, you know, support ourselves as my mom was getting divorced. I actually own a mixed-use building and actually rent out four units in my own house. All, all rooms, we share the kitchen, we share the living room, we do all that stuff. You know, and I, I feel like increasingly, the city is asking me to take on more and more responsibility for if someone chooses to trash my house and I have a seven hundred dollar deposit. That doesn't even cover a single couch. That doesn't even cover, you know, like, anything, anything at all. It's a historic home. If I have a window that gets destroyed, it could, it could very easily be two or three thousand dollars to get it repaired. And maybe that means I shouldn't have renters because I hear that. You shouldn't have renters if you're not willing to accept the risk. But I, I fail to see how that's going to help anyone. You know, and the rents that I'm charging are pretty low, and I'm, I'm choosing to do this. You know, and I want, I want to help people, but it's still very difficult to understand how there isn't really a balance. And I have to be honest, I'm also a little scared of how the city is presenting landlords, and I'm scared that people are going to take that as, we should be able to be aggressive towards my landlord. You know, just because, well, the city isn't supporting that. You know, I see, I see people rolling their eyes. I see people being very disrespectful here, and this is a very regulated place. You know, having someone live in your own home and start to kind of say, well, I have all these rights. And yes, they do have these rights, but when it becomes, you have to sit there and say, I have these rights, that means you've lost the dialogue. You know, the other thing is, I'd like to say, my mixed-use property, most of the tenants in the commercial side are all therapists. It would destroy their businesses if it turned out we had like convicted felons living in the building. It would destroy their businesses. They could not have that be public knowledge, and I wouldn't feel right renting to them either. You know, having people come in for therapy and having someone that could be seen threatening to them. That's not always the case, but it could be the case, and it could be the perception. So, I just, I guess I just kind of want to say, I feel like a lot of these policies are aimed at, obviously not the edge cases, they're aimed at the middle. And I'd like to see them a little more, a little more tailored and a little more responsive to not everyone is, you know, twenty units.
Thank you.
You seem to be a little bit confused, so I want to make sure that you understand a couple of things. Number one, as a landlord that lives in a shared home, you're exempted from this policy. You're also exempted from relo. Just let me finish because this isn't going to be a dialogue. The other issue, or the other thing that I think you're confused about is, we're not forcing you to use a low-barrier screening process. You can use your own screening process, and certainly, if you cater to businesses that need an increased level of safety and you feel that renting to someone with a prior conviction would compromise those other tenants or endanger your property, that's, that's your prerogative. So, I just wanted to clear up those fundamental misunderstandings because they just simply don't exist.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Kristen Bassett, and I sent you a lot of emails earlier, well, not a lot, a few, based on the previous drafts, and only just got the, the ones we're talking about tonight, last night. And they're very different and much improved. I'm a property manager, and I have two of my own rentals as well. And this is by and large doable. I would not like Mayor Wheeler's Amendment Four because I would like to be able to maintain my own screening criteria. After listening to all of this testimony, I, and also because I just have some other ideas, I will definitely revise my own. They are already very broad. Been a landlord for fifteen years at least, seventeen years maybe, and I have had the individual assessment for people with criminal convictions all along, or maybe not all along, but I implemented that, and it's really not an issue. I completely agree with the seventy-two hour period, and I think that based on the syndication software that people use, it should not be an issue because, I mean, it might be an issue for somebody who's got a hundred rentals turning over a month, but they would be able to handle that with one touch by changing the text within that unit and just saying, the application period starts at this time on this day. And then that's going to send it out to all those thirty places. They're not individually touching each thing. They syndicate automatically. And I think it's important to allow people time to find the listing. And also, if people are, the question of the cost of having excess vacancies, that's going to be mitigated by the broader screening criteria and the, the new income requirements. So, I mean, when I, when I first started reading about this, I thought, oh, this is what all of the people who own the, all the vacant apartments are trying to get the city to do so they can fill their vacancies. I wish. I mean, personally, for me, I would like to be able to set some criteria based on, just for like debt-to-income ratio. I've had people who've come to me and they've made a ton of money. They pulled up in a big, fat, fancy Volvo, looking like they walked out of The Matrix. And when I got their screening criteria, their credit report back, it showed they owed and their monthly debt payments were higher than their income. And I was like, they're living on credit cards and they are a house of cards that I don't want to fall in with. So, I'd like to be able to have some of my own input.
Very, very good. And if I may, colleagues, I will withdraw Amendment Number Four. My intention there was actually to clarify the language, and I inadvertently dropped an entire paragraph. And so, I, I think we'll, I will withdraw that, and I might reconsider clarifying language with the Housing Bureau. the Housing Bureau, but your core point is very well taken. I agree. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Kiersey Coleman. It's a pleasure to be here. I have cerebral palsy. So I'm one of the people that is directly affected by this policy, and I support this policy, and I'm also representing Real Choice Initiative. Real Choice Initiative allows folks like me to make decisions about where they really want to live. I know that accessible, affordable housing is very important, and I know that I wouldn't have ended up in an adult foster care hospice home situation in my early 20s if I would have known about accessible and affordable housing in my area. So that's why I think the rental registry is really important. Accessible, affordable housing allows me to be a productive member of society. I'm a college student, and I serve on many boards. I also work a part-time job, and I think that this would open a lot of doors for a lot of people. And I urge you to continue to have folks with disabilities and disabled folks at your meetings and ask for our voices and our perspectives, because I don't see a lot of visibly disabled folks here today. I know it's a very hard trek to sometimes come to these very inaccessible spaces. And so I just want to say, like, that's very articulate.
You're doing just fine.
This is one of my first times, but I'm very passionate about this. I really support this policy, and I want more folks to be at the table, and I know that they would like to be. So maybe we're willing to work with all of you. And so if we could get more outreach around the policies that affect, you know, the most affected communities, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to thank you for being here, and I'm sorry for commenting again, because I know we're nearing the end, but this is such an important issue to me. Getting to live in your own home with dignity in your community of choice isn't just a quality-of-life issue for people with disabilities. It's a life-or-death issue for a lot of people with disabilities. As I mentioned, my son has cerebral palsy. He is significantly involved, requires full support. And at some point, as his mom, I had to face what that meant for his life expectancy. And I did some research, and it wasn't good. For several years, I expected him to live about half of a normal lifespan because of the documented outcomes for people with his level of disability and his kind of collection of issues. I started celebrating his half birthdays, because I thought, well, if we're only going to get half a lifespan, we're going to get just as many birthdays. I finally talked to a developmental pediatrician about my concerns, and, because I started to doubt those outcomes. And what we discovered together was that because so many people, like my son, as adults, end up in foster care and medical facilities, that that data was taken from those places and not based on people living in homes with dignities. And the outcomes for people who get to do that are much better. And that doctor told me that my son could have a typical lifespan, which sent me a little into panic mode, like, wow, that really is going to change how I plan the rest of my life. But of course, it was a celebratory moment, too. And it's just made me even more passionate about people with disabilities getting to live with dignity in homes of their choice, like everyone else. And I'm just really grateful that you guys came here today to share your stories.
Thank you.
Commissioner, you're making him cry.
I know. I don't know how I got through that without choking up.
If I may, I don't know. We see it as a privilege now, that people aren't, that people get to do things, and it should be the expectancy, their expectation. We should have a higher expectation for disabled and elderly and poor folks that they have good housing. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thanks, all of you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next three, please, Carla.
I think we're at the bottom of the list, so unless Sammy Black is here. Okay, sorry. Thank you. So if anybody signed up and didn't hear their name called, please let me know.
The last word.
Of course, I'm here on behalf of Sammy.
Good evening.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Ally Serr, and I'm a renter living in southeast Portland, here to testify today in favor of the Fair Ordinance. Real quick, since feedback on the amendments was solicited, I would just like to say with regard to Mayor Wheeler's Amendment Number Seven, as someone that lives, has frequently lived in an owner-occupied duplex and cohousing, like, we're exempt from everything. Please let us be included in some kind of regulation for once. Please. Okay, so I think we also need to be in light of what other folks have been saying, you know, very clear and explicit of what this ordinance is about. This is about racism and what we are doing as a city to fight back against it. We all have implicit biases. I think this microphone's just wonky. We know what the data show.
Pull it back a little bit.
Oh, thank you. That's what it is. Thanks. And we know that the common sense regulations in the Fair Ordinance will not go far enough, but there'll be a step in the right direction towards movement in our city. We owe our fellow Portlanders that at the bare minimum. Black Portlanders and other Portlanders of color have lived long enough under policies that originated in a white utopia, a state with roots so bigoted and exclusionary that it did not want people who are not white to even live here. This is a small step. This is a common sense step. This is a very badly needed step. Every Portlander, black, brown, or white deserves an affordable, safe place to live, and without a burdensome security deposit or the threat of said deposit being stolen later. You have already heard many mom-and-pop landlords threaten to sell their rental properties if this ordinance passes. Similar threats were issued during SB 608, HB 2004, the relocation ordinance discussions. To those landlords, I would say, go for it. Sell your properties. If not discriminating against renters is too much of a burden, absolutely do sell your property. I don't understand why landlords feel like the threat of selling is a real threat. Properties that are sold do not magically disappear. No. If these racist landlords sell, their properties will be purchased by a new landlord or an owner occupant. In either situation, the housing is still being used. So please, I beg you, sell. I suspect they won't go through with it, though, because we hear the same line every time. We just discuss these sensible renter protections. On one other note, this week marks the end of the commercial climbing season on Mount Everest. This year, 11 people have died on the mountain. Depending on age and physical condition, climbers attempting to summit Everest have a between 2% and 25% chance of death. The average cost for a single person's Everest expedition is between $35,000 and $100,000. That's a lot of personal and financial risk in order to just have some bragging rights. So in closing, I'd ask you, Mayor, to devote a fraction of that risk-taking inclination that you once took to Everest to combat racist housing practices in Portland by voting yes on the Fair Ordinance without delay. Thank you for your time.
Interesting tie-in, to end it all up.
I was wondering where she was going with that.
For the record, the last time I went was so long ago. But it is interesting. Actually, the total price I paid is actually below the low end of what you just said. So weirdly enough, it's gotten more expensive, easier than...
Everest has been gentrified.
It's more than gentrified. It's done. It is done. The experience is very different. Any rate, so Commissioner U. Daly, my presumption is now we're done with the testimony. What is your will?
So the last couple people that were called didn't want to come up. I heard Sammy's, well, she called Sammy, but he didn't come to the table. You better hustle.
He called his...
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So we could continue this hearing, continue to take written...
It's been a 12-hour day. I'm sorry.
...testimony. Is that your expectation, and then we would have deliberation?
Yeah, I did request...
...vote on amendments and such?
Yeah, that we could leave the record open for written testimony.
Okay, we have a time certain for that. Is that right, Carla?
We just have a date, not a time.
Just the date? So it's in the regular agenda?
Yeah.
Did you want time certain? There's, we're pretty booked that morning.
I'll tell you what I would like to do. I'd like to make sure that that agenda is not too jam-packed. We ran into an issue last week where we just had a ridiculously jam-packed agenda, and I would like to have the time to actually ask lots of questions and be thorough in our discussions so that we all have an understanding of this issue. So I want to make sure that we reserve enough time to do it justice, the justice it deserves.
We've already got three time certens that morning that are going to almost 11:00, and the afternoon session is only available, the budget option, but then there's a work session from 2:30 to 4:30.
What about Tuesday?
And you're gone Thursday.
Is there a Tuesday?
Do we, we can't do them on Tuesday. That's right.
Are any of those time certens P-bot items? Because perhaps I would swap it out.
What are the time certain items, Carla? Can you tell us?
The 10:25 is Vision Zero.
Well, enough is enough.
I don't like, I don't like the optics of, what else is, what else is there as a time certain?
Morning is Summer Free For All and the Portland Pride Proclamation.
The Pride Proclamation should take, what did we put down for the time on that?
On the, for the proclamation?
Yeah, that doesn't, that's probably on...
Osha had asked for 20, but then he was looking for more time, so I don't know if he's been able to cut that down to even 20.
Okay. And then what is the afternoon work session?
It's the, I can't remember. It's a racial equity...
Results-based accountability?
Results-based accountability, racial equity discussion for the council. It's been scheduled. It's gotten out of town, trying to come in to talk with us.
All right. Well, I guess we'll put it on the regular agenda and just do our best, and people might want to buy a lunch that day and bring it in.
What else is there?
Right, right. Is that going to be different?
You eat lunch?
Touche.
He's got more time than we do.
He doesn't.
Yeah, if you saw the pizza I had on my lap right now, you wouldn't say that. So is that okay, then? And if we have to adjust at that time, we'll adjust at that time.
The regular agenda, then?
Yeah, just go ahead and put it on the regular agenda. So Carla, could you state the date again, just so I make sure I have it to the record?
Sure. So it'll be June 12:00, regular agenda.
And that's Wednesday?
Yes.
All right. So we will continue both items number 512 and 513 to Wednesday, June 12. The oral record is closed, but we will continue to take written commentary. And so that is continued, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for...